For a roll call to establish quorum, please.
Supervisor Bronson, here. Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Grahava.
Here.
Let the record show Supervisor Heinz is absent. All other board members are present.
All right, thank you. And now we're on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led by Scott Zufelt. Is he here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zufelt. He is the Director of Data Analytics and Governance? Correct. Yeah, so thank you. I really appreciate you, your willingness to lead us in the pledge. And now we have the land acknowledgement to be offered by Faith Ramon, a community organizer with Living United for Change in Arizona. And I believe we have a video.
Thank you very much for having me in this space. My name is Faith Ramon. I come from the Kiotahtla Community on the Tana'atah Nation. I'd like to acknowledge both of my parents, Arnold Ramon Senior and Geneva Ramon Acosta. I am the Tucson Community Organizer with Living United for a Change in Arizona and Arizona Center for Empowerment. Not only am I a community organizer, I hold two volunteer secretary positions. One for the Native American Education Program for the Sunnyside School District. I am the Secretary and Treasurer. I am also the Secretary for the Native American Church of Southern Arizona, NCSA. And I am very honored to be able to read the land acknowledgement on behalf of the Tana'atah Nation. So, on behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of the land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Tana'atah Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pasquayaki Tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partnership relations with Arizona's tribal nations. Supple. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramon. And now we have pause for pause. I believe we have a video for that as well.
Hi, everybody. My name's Monica. I'm the Director here at Pima Animal Care Center. And for pause for pause, I wanted to introduce you to my friend Opal. She's a really cute dog. She has come to us as an owner surrender. Opal is about a year and a half old. She is one of our special needs dogs. She is deaf. She can't hear you, but that's okay. She can smell you really well. And she loves treats. So definitely come down. All of our dogs' adoptions are free, and cats. We've got over 400 dogs in the shelter looking for homes that are super sweet, just like little Miss Opal. So come on down and check them out. Also coming up that I had to tell you guys about, we've got the Tucson Subaru Pets of Pima Parade coming up on February 19th. It is going to be a blast. This is our second annual parade. And it's not just for dogs like Opal. It's for cats. It's for pigs. It's for turkeys. It's for snakes. It's for whatever kind of pet you have. So we hope to see you then. And we hope you come on down and meet Opal or one of her friends. Thanks, you guys. Hope to see you soon. Bye.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Christie.
I'd like a moment of personal privilege, please.
Sure.
At the last Board of Supervisors meeting on January 24th, the call to the public was completely mishandled in not only a ham-fisted manner, but in a most troubling fashion that speaks to the very essence of our democracy: free speech. I have endured many calls to the public and numerous sessions were not pleasant events for me. But the longer I have served on this Board of Supervisors, now over six years, the more I have grown to witness and comprehend the importance, necessity, and sovereignty of call to the public. It preserves, protects, and defends a citizen's right, any and all citizens' rights, to their free speech and ability to address their elected officials in person, face to face. Tandem out to this sacred process is the implicit understanding that the elected officials, in our case, Pima County Supervisors, are not to speak, respond, or especially interrupt the citizens speaking across the podium to the dais, no matter what has been expressed or said. If, again in our case, the county supervisor feels that he or she was wrongly accused, slandered, or otherwise lied about by a citizen during the call, that supervisor has the ability and opportunity to address that at the end of the call to the public. During the call to the public on January 24th, the chair completely disregarded the rules, the tradition, and the implicit understanding surrounding call to the public, and turned the session into an unmitigated fiasco with threats galore simply because she arbitrarily deemed statements as uncivil against, quote, "community norms," whatever and whichever they are, and filled with personal attacks. None of these mischaracterizations applied. It appears that Chair Grahava wants to impose even more limits and sanctions on our free speech. In the subsequent weeks since January 24th, there have been several radio and other interviews by elected and non-elected county officials who have stated concerns about the lack of civility, propriety, courtesy, respect, and the like during the surrounding call to the public. One important element that has been left out and overlooked by those officials is the history, facts, and truth about how we got to this unfortunate and dangerous place. The blame for all of this mess and controversy over call to the public is the sole responsibility and fault of Supervisor Matt Heinz. It was Supervisor Heinz who ignited this flame when he purposely and irresponsibly interrupted and shouted down a speaker at the podium who was explaining her objections and reasons against COVID mandates being imposed on the community by this board. He further ignored the repeated admonishments to stop by the then-chair. At the next board meeting, which was virtual, another citizen was expressing similar views against COVID mandates. And again Supervisor Heinz interrupted her free speech, this time holding up signage with pejoratives written boldly. Then, yet again Supervisor Heinz, when attending by Zoom, interrupted speakers by wagging and shaking his fingers at them if he didn't like their comments. At that time, I introduced a resolution to this board asking that Supervisor Heinz be censured or rebuked for his anti-free speech actions and his anti-free speech actions and poor behavior, and my resolution died for lack of a second. It is important that we remember the facts and history of impeding free speech during call to the public and justly place the blame where all of this lies. And the blame lies directly and solely with Supervisor Matt Heinz. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. We can go ahead and have a seat, please. There are a few changes to the agenda. Page five, item 18, County Administrator Unfinished Business Protection of Water Resources Resolution Number 2023-1. Staff request this item be removed from the agenda. And page five, item 19, Unfinished Business Fair Horse Racing Commission, the county administrator requests this item be continued to the Board of Supervisors meeting of February 21st, 2023. If there are no objections, we'll go ahead and adjust the agenda. Okay, I don't see any objections. Thank you. All right. Now we have the Oath of Office. And so I don't know how this was done historically, but I think that every person that is duly elected deserves the opportunity to be able to be sworn in individually. And so I'd like to ask, we have Judge Bergen here, the presiding judge of Superior Court, who's going to be swearing people in. Thank you for being here, Judge Bergen. And first is the Clerk of the Superior Court, Gary Harrison. Can you step forward, please?
Will you state your full name, please?
Gary L. Harrison.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the constitutional laws of the state of Arizona.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of Pima County Clerk of Court.
Perform the duties of Pima County Clerk of Superior Court.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Harrison. Justice of the Peace, Victoria Steele, Precinct Number One. Come forward, please.
And if you'll state your full name, please.
Victoria Larise Steele.
And raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of Justice of the Peace.
Discharge the duties of Justice of the Peace.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Your Honor.
Congratulations. Now we have Sarah May Williams, Precinct Number Three.
If you'll state your full name, please.
Sarah May Williams.
And raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of Justice of the Peace.
Discharge the duties of Justice of the Peace.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Judge Williams. On the agenda, we have Justice of the Peace Ray Carroll, representing Precinct Number Seven. I understand that he's not here, but we send him our congratulations. And Justice of the Peace Crystal Ann Foster, Precinct Number Eight.
Good morning. How are you?
Will you state your full name, please?
Crystal Ann Foster.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of Justice of the Peace.
Discharge the duties of Justice of the Peace.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Judge Foster. Now we're on to the constables. On the agenda is Francisco Lopez, representing Precinct Number Two. And I understand that he's not here, but we send him congratulations. And next we have Constable Eric Kuznerich, representing Precinct Number Three.
All right. Will you state your full name, please?
Eric Frank Kuznerich.
And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of Pima County Constable.
Discharge the duties of Pima County Constable.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Constable Kuznerich. Now Constable Bill Lake, representing Precinct Number Eight.
And will you state your full name, please?
William John Lakewright.
And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of Pima County Constable.
Discharge the duties of Pima County Constable.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Constable Lake. Thank you, Judge Bergen. So if we want to go ahead and have, give us just a moment in case anyone would like to leave. You're all welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you'd like. But if any guests were coming specifically just for the swearing in, we'll give you a moment to walk out. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to the agenda. We have a presentation of a proclamation to Russell Tru, Chairman, Frank Valenzuela, Vice President, Grant Krueger, Board Member of the Rito Park Foundation, and Mark Van Buren, Director of Customer Experience and Operations for Rito Racing, proclaiming the day Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, to be the 80th anniversary of Rito Racetrack. And this will be provided by Supervisor Scott. Thank you for being here, huh? Oh, can I go ahead and have a motion, please?
I'll move the item.
Have a motion by Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Christie. Any discussion, objections? Item approved unanimously. Thank you.
And Russell, I understand your ranch has a pretty high rating.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we've.
Your guest ranch, yeah.
Yeah, and it means something to us because it's from our guests, so thank you.
No, thank you for doing what you do.
Charlie, you want to join me over here?
Yeah. Thank you.
Whereas the Rito River can trace its history back 4,000 years to a tradition of irrigated farming and Native American heritage, and whereas Rito Racetrack is a cultural icon for people from all cultures, especially horsemen and horsewomen who have trained, nurtured, and raced. who have trained, nurtured, and raced quarter horses and thoroughbreds at the track for eight decades. And whereas Rito Racetrack is the birthplace of modern quarter horse racing, was the first track to use photo finish and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas the Rito Park Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, was established to build a public-private partnership to restore the racetrack and manage the facility for multiple uses. And whereas Rito Racetrack provides internships for University of Arizona students studying in the racetrack industry program. And whereas the Jay Rukin Jelks Stud Farm is located on the grounds of Rito Racetrack and is named for the man who helped establish modern quarter horse racing. And whereas the Rito Park Foundation will celebrate the 80th anniversary of the track during the 2023 spring racing season to commemorate the rich history of horse racing in southern Arizona and the Tucson community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the day of Tuesday, February 7, 2023, to be the 80th anniversary of Rito Racetrack. And the Board of Supervisors, working in conjunction with the Natural Resources Parks and Recreation Department, supports the work of the Rito Park Foundation to continue building a community-wide, public-private partnership to make sure Rito Park and Rito Racetrack remain vibrant and important facilities in the heart of the old pueblo. Congratulations, gentlemen. Either of you like to say a few words? Mr. Tru?
Well, the only thing I'd say is I walked through the track after our successful, thankfully, first weekend just passed. I thought I saw a place unique in its ability to represent and express the special diversity of Tucson. I saw everybody there.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir? I just want to say thank you to Tucson for all the support of the Rito Racetrack over the last 80 years. Please come out and visit us again this weekend. We've got a season running until the first weekend of April, every Saturday and Sunday. And hopefully we'll see you guys for another 80 years. Thank you again.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started with the call to the public. The last board meeting, I had a really long script. And so in an effort to try to pare that down a little bit, I'm just going to read from the Board of Supervisors' Rules and Regulations that was revised October of 1997. Citizens attending meetings shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks and who becomes boisterous while addressing the board may be removed by the sergeant-at-arms if directed by the chair. Such person may be barred from further attendance before the board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stomping of feet, whistling, yells, or similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the chair who may direct offenders from the hearing room. And so what we're really hoping to do is create an environment that is welcoming for everyone who comes to call to the audience. So I'm hoping we can all be respectful. And with that, as a reminder, everyone has three minutes. And I'll go ahead and call speakers in groups of three. So if you'd like to come up and sit at these chairs at the front while you're waiting, that would be very helpful. All right, we have Gisela Aaron and Cory Stevens and Mike Aaron.
Good morning. My name is Gisela Aaron. I live in Rita Ranch, Arizona. I would like to address the board regarding your item number 15, Unfinished Business About Administrative Procedure 4-1, Board of Supervisor Policy C25.5. I feel it's unconstitutional abridgement of First Amendment rights. The United States Constitution starts with "we, the people." The people, the voters, elect you government servants. And you are accountable to us. You may go about taking care of our business without consent. Only if we consent, may you do so as permitted by law. You appear to have become all corrupted. And you have illegally assumed powers that appear to be absolute power. And we did not agree to that. We, the people, have not agreed to give you absolute power. Some of you may have forgotten this and may need re-education. Note that the Arizona State Constitution declares "All political power is inherent in the people and governments, derive their just powers from the consent of the governed, and are established to protect and maintain individual rights." The people do not consent to a power grab by a board controlling and limiting free speech. We, the people, do not consent to an unelected government employee, a clerk of the board, to assert power over free speech, which topics may be discussed or not. This is anti-American. This is fascism, and we do not consent. The people have a constitutional right to be heard, and no government servant shall abridge those rights. Please vote no on illegal abridgement of the free speech, especially if the business community would like to address you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory Stevens?
I'm Cory Stevens. I live in Sarita, Arizona. First off, thank you, Mr. Christie, for your words at the beginning of the meeting. Duly appreciated. Changing the process by which.
Could you get closer to the mic? I'm having.
Certainly, thank you. Changing the process by which all agenda and addendum items, I'm addressing item 15. Changing the process by which all agenda and addendum items are submitted seems only to serve the interests of the Board of Supervisors rather lack of interest in certain subject matter and not serve the interests of the constituency who bring forth those agenda items. Policy additions listed in C25, Section 1, Item C and D are a gross overreach of your authority. To have items submitted in the form of a Board of Supervisor Agenda Addendum Report that will then be reviewed by legal counsel, whom I assume will be of your choosing, will only delay the process and most likely allow certain individuals of this board to cherry pick items for approval. This adds yet another layer of bureaucratic red tape that hinders our democratic process. For those of you on this board who may need a refresher, the definition of democratic process is that citizens actively participate in the decision-making process of government. I urge Sharon, Steve, and hopefully our swing vote, Mr. Scott, to say no on this egregious measure. This is, as she stated, an infringement on our freedom of speech. And your constituency is begging you. We have a group of people who came today to say, please, vote no. Do not infringe on our right for free speech.
Mike Aaron?
And before you start, you want to introduce your friend?
This is Max.
Hi, Max.
Name is Mike Aaron. I live in Rita Ranch. My name is Mike Aaron. I live in Rita Ranch. Under the Constitution, I have the legal right of free speech under the First Amendment. This amendment cannot be abridged by anyone in the United States. I have the right to do that. I have the right to contact my elected representative to address my egregiouses with the county. An unelected county employee does not have the right to decide what goes on the agenda. Our elected officials do. I served 20-plus years in the United States Army. I spent almost 19 years at the University of Arizona Police Department. I took oaths. I swore to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of Arizona. And I have done this. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Frederick, followed by Bonnie Polos and Anne Rose. Oh, okay. Stephanie Frederick.
Good morning. This is regarding Rito Park's amplified music events. My name is Stephanie Frederick. I've been a Tucson resident for 48 years and at my current Mountain Limberloss location for the past 11. I've had a longtime career as a registered nurse, most recently with my own R. inpatient advocacy business, helping people to navigate the medical system. For the past six years, I've been a Pima County Superior Court probate investigator and retired last month. I'm an avid gardener, pickleball player, bird watcher, and lover of nature. Living along the Rito River has offered me a wonderful quality of life and a true sense of place. Although there have been many over-the-top amplified noise events at Rito Park and Racetrack, I will focus on the recent racetrack opening weekend. Saturday, February 4. I'm participating in a U of A Healthy Minds for Life research study. I returned home on Saturday afternoon and started a cognitive test when it was quiet at the racetrack with my office patio door open. I was interrupted by unexpected, very loud drums, vocals, and electric instruments. I closed my porch door but was unable to continue desktop testing due to the loud volume inside my office. My U of A research study concluded on Monday, and my February 4 data won't be used due to this interference. On Sunday, February 5, friends were invited to join my partner and I for outdoor card playing. Because we feared the same outrageous amplified noise disturbances, we canceled our plans and agreed to meet at our friend's home on Monday instead. The inability to play our own music and stay outdoors has occurred many times over the last two years. My October birthday party was canceled due to the outrageous Salt and Lime Festival. Flyers said organizers were anticipating 10,000 attendees. So opening weekend affected me personally on both days. That's one household among thousands in a one-mile radius of Rito Park. I have neighbors who are dying of cancer, and to be forced to tolerate these raucous events is a horrible end of plight, end-of-life plight. There has been several five- and six-member amplified band events at the pavilions in the last year. Situated just a few yards off the loop, the amplified sound is clearly in violation of Pima County's 125-foot noise ordinance parameters. Rito Park neighbors feel helpless and hopeless after many years of trying to report disturbances. TPD, Pima County Parks, Rito Park Foundation, no one is accountable or accessible at the time of event complaints. Enough is enough. Stop abusing your constituents and using Rito Park as your money-making venture. End amplified music events.
Your time has expired. And if you could, if you'd like to give us your written comments, we can share that with the rest of the board members. Thank you. Bonnie Polos? I'm sorry, I feel like I'm mispronouncing your last name.
You did fine.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bonnie Polos, and I'm here on behalf of the Campus Farm Neighborhood Association. I appreciate the opportunity to address you about our issues with amplified entertainment at Rito Park. 80 years of horse racing at Rito Park is quite an achievement. The horse racing is not what I'm here to complain about, nor am I here to complain about the soccer games that take place with regularity or the airline farmer's market that takes place on weekend mornings. I'm here to ask you, to beg you, to halt any and all amplified entertainment at the park because it is completely incompatible with the residents who live along the Rito River. Rito Park is not the appropriate site for festivals or other entertainments that draw thousands of people and disrupt the lives of those of us who live there. These festival events only started in about 2012. And when it began, the events caused many of us to call the Tucson Police Department and the Pima County Sheriff's Office to make the noise stop. Now they don't even respond or record those calls because they are, quote, sanctioned events put on by Pima County. Since 2012, the number of events held at Rito Park that use amplified sound has steadily increased to the point where now almost every weekend during the pleasant times of the year, residents are assaulted by amplified music emanating from the park and heard sometimes as much as a mile away. Just imagine, each of you in your own homes, how would you feel if every weekend you and your family were subjected to amplified noise not of your choosing blasting into your homes all day long? We believe that the park is an appropriate place for soccer games and tournaments, for horse racing, for the farmer's market, for people who want to enjoy the park with their families. However, it is not an appropriate place for festivals or any event that uses amplified sound on a continual basis for hours on end. We're asking that when you renew the annual operating agreement with the Rito Park Foundation, that you prohibit any amplified sound whatsoever at the pavilions that line the south side of the park and that you prohibit other amplified sound events elsewhere in the park where the sound can be heard outside the boundaries of the park. Nothing else at this point will relieve the burden that you have foisted on us in your efforts to save horse racing at Rito Park. Thank you very much.
Anne Rose? Then we have Pendleton Specio Tara Radliff and Josh Jacobson.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning.
My few words require critical thinking and connecting some dots. The early warning signs of fascism. Destruction of religion. Gun confiscation. Identification of enemies as a unifying cause. Disdain for individual rights. Control over energy, control over communication. School indoctrination. Attacks on free speech. Warrantless spying. Doomsday fear mongering. Fraudulent elections. Okay, what I really wanted to talk about was how the COVID injections affect intestinal health. The censored medical and scientific research is showing that in children, probably in adults, no one's really studying it. We're not being told about it unless we go searching for it. Pima County Board of Health, Pima County Health Department sure doesn't talk about it. But that spike protein that the body's now generating from the shots is causing leaky gut, kind of like the border. Leaky, leaky, leakiness. What that is saying is that the spike protein is going into the bloodstream and then into the organ systems of the human body. Causes inflammation. Before the COVID injections, leaky gut allowed food particles, bacteria, pathogens to get into the bloodstream, causing all sorts of inflammation and problems. Now, now we have this COVID shot. Repeated COVID shots, repeated boosters. And what does the Pima County Health Department do? Just reinforce more of this. What the Pima County Health Department lacks, what we taxpayers here at Pima County are missing, is true health education and support for all these problems. We still, Chairman Grahava, want a public hearing. We were dismissed twice last year, late last year, twice, by the president of the Board of Health. It's insulting, it's scary, and it's, you know, if you have your children who've gotten the shots and they have a tummy ache, pay attention. Pay attention to that. They could be in some real trouble. Ils pourraient être en quelque sorte de troubles, pas à mentionner les adultes. Donc, de toute façon, j'ai pris mon temps.
Merci. Ok. Pendleton Specio. Tara Radliff. Josh Jacobson.
Bonjour.
Bonjour.
Mon nom est Pendleton Spicer. Et dans l'ombre du changement de instructions, de l'instruction pour la call à la publicité. Ok, est-ce mieux? Les réactions du président aux commentaires et à l'item numéro 15. J'ai décidé que c'était le mieux pour éduquer la comité sur les droits des constituents et la constitution des États-Unis et des États-Unis. Je, l'une des personnes, souhaite vous rappeler que même si vous êtes limité dans vos pouvoirs et libertés, nous, les gens, avons la liberté de nous exprimer sur tous les sujets, incluant votre performance comme agents de nous, les gens. Article 2 de section 1 de la constitution de l'Arizona dit : "Un recours fréquent de principes fondamentaux est essentiel pour la sécurité des droits individuels et la perpetuité d'une gouvernement libre." S'il vous plaît, notez que c'est le devoir des gens de répétément rappeler et éduquer les officiers publics qui, selon les responsables, servent les gens. Article 2, section 6, dit : "Chaque personne peut parler librement, écrire, publier sur tous les sujets étant responsable de l'abuse de ce droit." La constitution des États-Unis, la première amendment, dit : "Le Congrès ne fera aucun loi en abridant la liberté de parole." Tous les gouvernements états, counties et municipaux ont fait obhutte de leur poste avec toute connaissance de la langue de l'obhutte. Les exigences de votre poste sont écrites dans la constitution de l'Arizona et détaillées dans les statuts des états. Vous avez cherché et accepté votre poste avec toute connaissance que dans lui, vous êtes des serviteurs fidèles de nous, les gens. Et vous avez affirmé que votre but principal était de protéger et maintenir les droits individuels des gens en soutenant la constitution des États-Unis et de l'Arizona. La liberté de parole est maintenant attaquée. Le premier attentat est basé sur l'existence d'un nouveau "droit", le droit de ne pas être violé. Il est prétendu que le droit de ne pas être violé est plus important que le droit de la parole libre. Il n'y a pas de moyen de complètement éviter de donner de la peine. À un moment donné, quelqu'un va prendre de la peine. C'est quelque chose que quelqu'un d'autre dit ou fait, c'est inévitable. Dans une démocratie, il ne peut pas y avoir le droit de ne pas être violé. Si quelqu'un peut prétendre que la parole d'une autre personne est offensive et doit être prohibée, il n'y a pas de limite aux restrictions qui peuvent être placées sur la parole libre. Comme l'a dit le célèbre auteur Christopher Hitchens, la liberté de parole doit inclure la licence de faire de la peine. Où que il soit sanctionné, le "droit de ne pas être violé" invalide la loi des droits et la constitution. Merci.
Merci. Tara Radliff. Et puis Josh Jacobson, suivie par Kevin Daly.
Mon nom est Tara Radliff, je continuerais où Pendleton est allé. La base de la mouvement "Je suis violé" lie dans deux concepts flous : correctitude politique et raisonnement émotionnel. Correctitude politique est un moyen de stifler la parole libre en faveur d'un pensée contrôlée socialement. Ré原因 est où les sentiments déterminent l'interprétation de la réalité. Si quelqu'un est en colère, ça prouve que quelque chose est mal. Ça ne compte pas que vous l'avez voulu, aucun disrespect. La réaction subjective de l'autre personne détermine le résultat. Sous cette doctrine, la parole libre est un concept vieux. Dans le cas de Metal contre Tam, la Cour suprême a défendu la parole libre. Justice Samuel Alita a écrit : "La parole peut non pas être banie sur le terrain où elle exprime des idées qui font de la peine." La parole qui est dédiée à la race, à l'ethnicité, à la gender, à la religion, à l'âge, à la disability ou à n'importe quel autre terrain similaire est haineuse. Mais le plus proudre de notre jurisprudence de parole libre est que nous protégeons la liberté d'exprimer la pensée que nous haisons. Cette comité n'est pas une tribune et ne peut pas décider légalement de détruire la liberté des gens d'expression juste parce qu'elle prend de la peine à ce qui est dit. Et oui, je comprends que la parole libre n'est pas illimitée. Cependant, tant que les gens ne menacent pas et incitent pas des actions légitimes, parmi d'autres choses, nous avons le droit de parler nos pensées sans arrêt. Concernant l'item numéro 15. Si la procédure et la politique ont changé, cela aura l'effet de stifler les voix des gens en ajoutant un niveau de bureaucratie qui englobe le processus dû et l'habilité des superviseurs de ajouter des questions de intérêt public et de préoccupations à l'agenda de discussion. La politique actuelle a été en place depuis des années et a servi bien au public. Je recommande à chacun d'élire non. En fin de compte, je voudrais vous laisser ces mots de sagesse de trois hommes célèbres. Quiconque renouerait la liberté d'une nation doit commencer par subduire la liberté de parole. Benjamin Franklin. Je accepte que les gens vont me appeler des choses horribles tous les jours et je défendrai toujours ce droit de le faire. Barack Obama. La parole libre est la base des droits humains, la racine de la nature humaine et la mère de la vérité. Pour voler la parole libre, c'est de la辱er les droits humains, de stifler la nature humaine et de supprimer la vérité. Liu Zhao Wu. Merci beaucoup.
Merci. Josh Jacobson.
Bonjour, mon nom est Josh Jacobson. Je suis un advocate de cette communauté qui porte beaucoup de chapeaux. Je suis ici pour parler de l'item numéro 15 aujourd'hui. Je suis très préoccupé par cet item. Je pense que le processus actuel dans lequel les superviseurs élu peuvent ajouter des items à l'agenda comme ils le voient bon Je suis préoccupé par le nouveau processus qui permettrait une modification budokratique et légale et pour les gens qui ont ces positions qui ne sont pas élu être en charge de ce qui peut ou ne peut pas se terminer sur l'agenda est assez troublant. Je pense que le pouvoir doit rester avec les superviseurs. Le président Grahalva, vous avez indiqué que ce que vous voulez améliorer est la transparence. Je ne pense pas que vous aurez quelqu'un qui disagreeera que plus de transparence est meilleure, nous le voulons tous. Cependant, nous devons être très, très prudent avec le processus que nous utilisons pour l'employer parce que nous ne voulons pas de conséquences inattendues et je vois plusieurs dans l'item numéro 15. Je pense que si vous voulez transparence, il y aura beaucoup de soutien communautaire dans d'autres domaines. Supervisor Scott, je sais que vous êtes très intéressé en regardant ce que d'autres counties font. Je pense que c'est très important de voir quelles sont les meilleures pratiques, mais je veux souligner que ce processus a fonctionné pour la ville de Pima depuis 1997. Je ne dis pas ça parce que je suis en faveur de faire des choses juste pour des raisons historiques, mais si il y avait une sorte de responsabilité légale avec notre processus, la ville de Pima n'est pas une étrange à être poursuivie, elle aurait été explorée maintenant. J'ai eu quelques commentaires pour le superviseur Heinz aujourd'hui. Je suis triste qu'il ne soit pas ici, donc le président Grahalva, si Judge Bergen est toujours ici, pouvons-nous dire en son bureau d'assister à son service ou non, ce n'est pas une possibilité? Peut-être la prochaine fois. Bien, le bas de la ligne est que je pense que la communauté a vraiment pris en compte de ça. Je pense qu'il devrait y avoir une conversation vraiment bonne. J'espère voir une vote aujourd'hui et j'espère que nous avons un bon résultat qui rend notre côté de la salle assez heureux. Merci.
Merci. Kevin Daly, puis nous avons Silver Sars, Melinda Sherwin et Elizabeth Maguire.
Salut, je suis Kevin Daly. Ceci n'est pas celui que je voulais dire, mais c'est celui que je vais dire maintenant. Donc, la coalition crime libre Tucson est née il y a environ six mois. C'était une réponse à un manque de leadership public durant les trois dernières années en particulier. L'issue de la crime et de la légalité affectant notre business et la communauté et nos citoyens. Ce qui a été parfaitement clair à travers nos 3,000 membres et en grandissant et les 400 emails et les appels téléphoniques durant les deux derniers jours que vous avez reçus, ce que je comprends être un record. C'est comme quatre fois plus que tout autre problème que vous avez reçu. Donc, félicitations au public pour la parole libre. La communauté est en gros en vous parlant, en disant ce qu'ils veulent. L'item 15 va stimuler la publicité publique, l' capacité des citoyens concernés et des groupes de citoyens de ramener des éléments importants au superviseur. Nous avons tous eu des sessions d'écoute, des forums publics et avons entendu toutes les solutions, vous savez, à certains des crimes, le problème numéro un de Tucson et de la ville de Pima. Nous, la ville de Pima, pouvons faire ce qui est juste pour la ville de Pima. Arrêter les distractions. Et revenir à la travaille avec les citoyens de la coalition crime libre Tucson, nos partenaires. Dispossez de l'item 15 aujourd'hui avec aucun retard. Ça n'est plus controversé, nous savons ce que les citoyens veulent. S'il vous plaît, s'il vous plaît, votez non. Merci.
Merci. Silver Sars?
Salut, mon nom est Silver Sars, je suis une nurse reconnue et j'ai un message de Dr. Scott Jensen. Il lit du Wall Street Journal.
Subtitulé : "Les officiers de la santé publique ont imposé des mandats et ont gardé la news de potentiels effets secondaires sous couche." Je vais juste lire. Les autorités de la santé ont depuis encouragé la distrust en oversoldant les bénéfices des vaccins, les poussant sur les enfants qui sont à risque élevé d'une maladie sérieuse, en imposant des shots en jouant des effets secondaires potentiels et en smettant ceux qui posent des préoccupations en diffusant de la misinformation. Quatrième paragraphe de l'article. Anthony Fauci était parmi ceux qui ont mis le public en may 2021. Quote : "Quand vous êtes vacciné, vous ne protégez pas seulement votre propre santé et celle de la famille, mais aussi vous contribuez à l'immunité de la communauté." Les réinfections sont courantes. Dans un article de la semaine dernière dans le journal, Dr. Fauci et deux co-autes ont décrit en détail dense pourquoi il est si difficile de développer des vaccins qui fournissent une protection de vie sur la infection par les virus respiratoires. Quote : "L'article a demandé, quote : "Si les infections de virus respiratoires naturelles ne provoquent pas une immunité complète et longue contre la réinfection, comment pouvons-nous espérer des vaccins, spécialement des vaccins non replicatifs, pour faire de ça?" Il semble ici que l'article de Tony Fauci dit : "Si les infections ne peuvent pas le faire, alors comment les vaccins?" Il semble qu'il élevait l'immunité naturelle des infections sur les vaccins et disant que si l'immunité naturelle ne peut pas le faire, alors certainement les vaccins ne pourraient. C'est un échange. Prochain paragraphe. "Mais les officiers de la santé publique ont tout de même suggéré que les vaccins de COVID aident à atteindre une immunité faible et réduire la transmission." C'était la preuve de l'administration Biden des mandats vaccinés, qui ressemblent encore pire en hindsight. Les officiers de l'administration de la santé alimentaire étaient préoccupés que le révision du vaccin de Pfizer durant l'été de 2021 était en ralentissement. Marion Gruber, directrice de la recherche vaccinale de la FDA, a averti le commissaire actif Janet Woodcock dans un e-mail de juillet 2021 que le révision hyper accélérée would undermine la confiance dans le vaccin. Le FDA, plus tôt que cette année, avait publiquement publié une déclaration sur sa website qu'il détectait quatre événements potentiels de danger liés au vaccin de Pfizer chez les seniors. Un, une embolismate pulmonaire, de la sang dans les poumons. Deux, une infarction myocardiale急性, un attaque cardiaque. Trois, une thrombocytopénie immunitaire, c'est une petite quantité de plate-let.
Merci. Melinda Sherwin. Nous avons Elizabeth Maguire, Anastasia, pas de nom final, et Brooke Doty.
Il y a des contrôles et des équilibres sur chaque travailleur du gouvernement. Et vous pouvez peut-être ne pas savoir ça, mais vos règles et les politiques que vous écrivez ne suprécient pas la première amendment de l'État-Uni ou la clause de suprématie, qui dit que la constitution est la loi de la terre. Donc, quand le departe, je suis un advocate. Donc, le département de sécurité infantile prend entre 13,000 et 20,000 enfants d'Arizona chaque année. Et il y a une organisation appelée le Comité Oversight de la ZDCS. Ils nous ont permis pendant des années de parler et de apporter les problèmes de blessures sans procès dû dans les tribunaux de dépendance. Donc, la loi ouverte est pour protéger le public, pour éviter les décisions being faites en secret, pour promouvoir l'accountabilité en encourageant les officiers publics à agir responsablement. C'est juste trois points. Si nous avons une plainte contre un corps qui supprime la parole libre, nous allons, nous allons à l'avocat de la municipalité. Et Mr. Brown, je ne sais pas quel type d'advice vous donnez à ce corps, mais filez une plainte avec un autorité d'application. Si la parole publique est coupée par un groupe de bureaucrat, ok? C'est votre devoir. Et avec Laura Conover assis ici, double masque et ne pas prendre n'importe quoi de la action, nous sommes allés à Montgomery quand il était l'avocat de la municipalité de Maricopa. Et il a écrit à ce Comité Oversight de la ZDCS et a dit : "Vous brisez la loi, vous devriez laisser ces gens parler." Et puis les choses ont commencé à changer. Ils ont des yeux sur la DCS. Ils tuent les enfants. They are killing children. Two girls just died and were face down in a ditch in Maricopa County from one of their group homes. Oh, and by the way, these group homes, $83,000 per year, per child from the federal government for each child that seized by DCS. And those are 2014 numbers.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Elizabeth McGuire.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth McGuire. I'm District One, and my purpose here is to address the unfinished business, but not just the freedom of speech aspect, but the entire handling of the agenda. If we do not understand what the real problem in this county is, we cannot move forward with finding solutions. We have not accepted the fact that this board has promoted lies and propaganda in handling a supposed health crisis. You can say whatever you want about what happened the last three years, but the truth is, we were lied to and we were served propaganda on a daily basis. We can see all the evidence now, and I want this board to apologize for all the policies and mandates that they instigated that drove neighbor against neighbor and our community apart. This is a tragedy that I am living through. Every day, people hate each other. And it's just because they think everyone's a disease now, because this county and our government and our unelected bureaucrats have treated people like disease. They're not honorable to them. We're getting less than average healthcare. This is subpar, and it's not acceptable. We have to accept the problem. We have to admit that we are wrong in everything that was done in three years. When you guys accept that you were wrong and you apologize to all of us, to all of the citizens, then all those other agenda items that you want to do, all the money that you want to spend, all the tax dollars that you're taking from us, especially those of us who do not have jobs anymore, because you took away our employment. You destroyed our businesses. I expect something to be done about that agenda item soon.
Thank you. Anastasia. Okay, we have Brooke Doty, Tracy Tolan, Sue Ann Christensen. Thank you.
Please wait till the clapping stops. We can't hear you. We can't hear the names you're calling.
Anastasia Tsatsakis, Legislative District 19, District Four. Thank you, Mr. Christie, for your words this morning. I am going to bring up a few things about a few of the agenda items that are disturbing to me and I'm sure are disturbing to others here. Agenda item 18, protection of water resources, and said verbiage that was drafted into the language by Ms. Lesher. Climate change and evaluating social equity does not have anything to do with water resources. I will tell you that right now. The problem is, there's been too much focus on water issues where it concerns supposed social equity, which I still, again, do not understand what that has to do with water resources when we are already running dry and we have had state, House, and senators sell away our rights to other states. Why don't you investigate that? This is not a new issue. Furthermore, Agenda item number 25, Catholic Community Services of Southern Arizona. I think any organization that is being given hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on contracts needs to be fully investigated immediately. And let's face it, these are not asylum seekers. These are not here for asylum. You guys have placed people crawling and being trafficked across this border illegally. You are allowing them to go before any other person who is here legally and has started their legal process and their legal right to become a U.S. citizen. There are people here who have green cards, who have fought for five to 10 years to get their citizenship, and you are denying them all of that by feeding resources to these illegal charities who are taking your money, whether or not you know it, they are taking your money and they're using it for their own other purposes. And these illegals should not be funded. Item number 27, Dahlberg Design. This seriously needs some revision and investigation. COVID-19 is done. We have cures for COVID-19, of which no one has ever admitted. We have the cures for COVID. We always had them for three years and they were shut down by the Department of Education. People are still dying in the hospital with subpar care. I have had friends who were murdered in the hospitals flooding their lungs and being fed remdesivir daily, and they were dying because of it. Shame on all of you. You need to investigate the hospitals. Homelessness and public safety. Well, I think we don't really need to look much further than down the street. We've got homeless encampments that are now pervading everywhere. I drove by several of them on Campbell Road, and I know that there's more, and they're pervading into the outskirts now, into my territory, into Mr. Christie's territory. We've got homeless tents that we see popping up in the middle of the desert. We have school districts that are right around there in the Vail School District System, and we've got homeless people.
Thank you. Brooke Doty. Excuse me, I'd like to remind you all that this is a board meeting, and I'd like to give everyone time. And so I don't want to have to scream over everyone, and it's not a town hall. It's called to the audience. I'm sorry, Mr. Doty, just a second. Tracy Tolan, Sue Ann Christensen, and Christie Simone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Brooke Doty. I'm a taxpayer here in Pima County. As you know from my last visit, I'm a huge fan of Board of Supervisor Policy D 21.2. And I think that it's really, it's a great policy that you guys have published because it's simple to understand. It's applicable to all, everybody. Employees, people applying for jobs, contractors, vendors, elected officials, members of the public, anybody who's in the county realm is covered by this policy. The policy is also clear about its standards of conduct in the county space. Dirty jokes are not allowed. Pornography is not allowed. It's inappropriate, right? Pictures, videos, comments, gestures, groping people, all this stuff is hideous and it's prohibited by your policy. And congratulations for taking a strong stand on that. You've also set a clear standard for this policy, and it's not, you know, it's not a court order, it's not a preponderance of evidence, it's not reasonable suspicion or even probable cause. The standard in your policy is, "It may have happened." That's a pretty low standard. So your policy says that if some of this inappropriate conduct may have happened in the county, then you're required by your policy, you're not allowed, you're required by your policy to report that conduct that may have occurred to the county HR for investigation. Because they're supposed to be putting together a preponderance of evidence, they're supposed to be tracking a history of inappropriate conduct to make sure that these kind of predatory people are not allowed to be in the space, right? So it's a great policy, but why are you afraid to enforce your own policy? I don't know, Mr. County Attorney, did you know or should have known that there was, there may have been a violation of that board policy that happened? Did you do what you're required by board policy to do, which is report it to HR? Ms. County Administrator, did you know or should have known that there was perhaps maybe a violation of that policy that you were required to report it to HR? Chairman Grijalva, did your office know or should have known that there perhaps may have been a violation of board policy that must be reported to HR? Why, are you afraid of retribution? Are you afraid of being bullied or somehow badgered if you actually go through and follow through on your own policy and enforce it? If the leaders and managers of the county are afraid to enforce this policy, what about the rank and file? What chance do they have of actually reporting misconduct and not being harassed and bullied and victims of retribution? Do your job.
Thank you. Tracy Tolan.
I think you called my name. I'm Sue Ann Christensen, and I want to say thank you for doing the service that you do as elected officials. I know oftentimes it takes a lot of patience and strength, and it isn't always comfortable. That said, I just want to address the concerns regarding the recent changing of policy agenda item. I want to share a story with you, and you may relate to it. Last week, my cat got out. When I discovered this, I went looking for him. Only before I was able to locate him, another HOA resident was attacked by him while walking her dog. Needless to say, I rushed to the commotion. Without all the details that I knew despite her anger and upset, I was and am responsible for the animal in agreement of living in the residency of the HOA that we both resided in and apply the rules and regulations. Despite the extreme discomfort I experienced with her screaming and anger, I did my best to diffuse it by listening and could totally understand. I accepted my accountability in agreeing to live by the CCRs when I purchased a home in this community. In the end, we were able to resolve our situation as neighbors living in the community. All this is really expressed because it was uncomfortable, and I can relate to when people's behaviors and reactions are angry and accusatory. And at the last board, when it was convened, there was a situation of an angry constituent who's speaking in a skill set that was underdeveloped. What is my grave concern is the proposed policy to alter agenda items and how they receive screened and subject to legal counsel before they're allowed to become an agenda item. I ask you to reconsider this. The oaths that elected and appointed officials take to uphold the inalienable rights are our freedom of speech and our inalienable rights by the Constitution. As a county clerk employee and who is applying her duties, she is most likely to serve the people she's employed by. So I'm asking you, to remind you that you are under oath to abide by the Constitution of the United States, and no policy is over that right. So I'm asking all of you, when you consider our rights as people that you serve, that you vote no on this new item, because we don't want to be suppressed. And having complicated processes to be heard is only going to encumber us. So I'm asking you, as your constituent, please do not vote anything but no. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Tolan. And after Christie Simone, Drew Heaton, Shirley Recard, and Stephanie Kirk.
Hi, I'm Tracy Tolan. I'm here to speak today in favor and support of Tucson Crime Free Coalition, and also ask the Board of Supervisors to vote no on item 15. Tucson Crime Free has grown to over 2,500 members and has been successfully advocating for solutions to our city's homeless crisis. It's at the height of this momentum that Supervisor Grijalva wants to put a bureaucratic process in place so important items such as this won't be dealt with in a timely manner. Item 15 will create an unelected gatekeeper for the meeting agenda. It puts the people farther from their elected officials, and local government should be accountable and accessible to the people. We don't elect the clerk of the board, but we do elect our supervisors, and you should be working to make it easier for our voices to be heard. Supervisor Grijalva, why do you want to suppress opposing views? Homelessness is an important topic plaguing our city. You're trying to stop our only means of having a productive town discussion. Passing item 15 won't make us go away, it will strengthen our resolve. This impotent board has failed to come up with any effective solutions, and now it's time to listen to we, the people. And I want to take this time to say, I spoke to this board before about the homeless that come onto my property. I have two young children. And on Sunday, while I was shopping, my husband was alone with the kids, and there was a homeless man stepping onto our property, and I got an alert on my phone. Thank God I have the money to pay for security cameras. And this man went onto our property and went to the side of our house and started disposing of his trash in our garbage can. He then decided he would walk further to the backyard and check out what he could take. He wanted to start taking what was on our property. My husband then opened the door and said, "Excuse me, can I help you? What are you doing?" And he just said, "Oh, I'm just, you know, I'm just here, you know, throwing my trash away." And he said, "You know, please get off of our property." And that was very polite. This is what I'm dealing with. We have to fix the homeless crisis in our city. It is plaguing us. I don't feel safe going into my front yard. And to refresh your memory, I had an encampment in Mar-a-Roya in my front yard. I no longer feel safe in my own home. Two young children, five and nine. Do you know how it scares them to see fentanyl zombies walking onto their property? It's terrifying.
Thank you. Christie Simone.
Good morning to you all. So Ms. Grijalva doesn't want people at the call of the audience to mention the names of the people making the votes that affect their lives. Ms. Grijalva also believes that whatever she comes up with in her head equals community norms. In addition, Ms. Grijalva now wants to choke the ability of elected officials, putting items that they believe are important to their communities and their districts on the agenda. Her disregard for free speech and accountability is pretty astounding. While I don't advocate personal attacks on elected officials or unelected officials, your names are attached to the votes that can enrich or ruin the lives of the people of Pima County. Those votes are attached to your name. You have little nameplates that we know who you are. Reasonable adults believe that criticizing the names of those who make those votes are a critical part of a working democracy. The four of you continuing the worldview debacle is downright laughable. Ms. Grijalva, while on the TUSD Board, made votes that made it one of the worst school districts in the state of Arizona. When you walk away from a district with 24% of the kids who are Hispanic and Reed at Level, you're an unqualified failure. At the same time, you clapped while kids were expressing their free speech by chaining themselves to a desk during a dutifully scheduled meeting. When Rex read his love letter on why Chuck Huckleberry should have his contract renewed, he was wrong. In retrospect, now that Chuck's gone, the county's in a much better direction and the employees can breathe a sigh of relief without being micromanaged doing their jobs. When Mr. Hines led the war on vaccine mandates, mask mandates, and the pathetic curfew, which you guys were laughed at a court on, in hindsight, you were all wrong. Except for Stevie, voted against most of those. I think all of those, sorry, Stevie. Those votes made by people with names ruin people's lives. It's time to retool your thinking. So I go back to New York Yankee executive George Costanza. Every instinct I have in every aspect of life, it's often wrong. His friend Jerry counseled, "If every instinct you have is wrong, then the opposite would have to be right." So let's start acting like some adults that want to make this place better. Whatever your instinct is telling you on your next vote, think of George Costanza and do the opposite. The working poor and the citizens of Pima County might thank you one day instead of cursing this miserable course you're on now. I know pride is a hell of a thing, but it's time to grow up and do the right thing.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Drew Heaton, and I am the Chair for the Libertarian Party here in Pima County. And perspective is what differentiates us from both our friends on the right and the left. And I think some libertarian perspective is what is needed because some of the members of the board seem to be baffled by the uprisings and the outbursts by people in the public. And I think that comes from fundamentally misunderstanding two things, and that is government and human nature. Falsely, I think, we look to representative government, as in you represent us. Unfortunately, that has synonymously become, or is synonymous today with self-interest or special interest, when in reality, the libertarian perspective is that we have, we look to those who represent us as those who are protecting the rights of everyone, not just ours. But we need people who are willing to stand in government, who will protect the rights of even those with whom we disagree. So as far as human nature, as long as you continue to put policy over people, you're going to have blowback and retaliation, and it's not going to make our community any safer or even this boardroom. It might appear to be that for a while, but there was always a buildup to what ended up happening with the American Revolution or even the bloody French Revolution. So I do not have the right to go to any one of you and take your property. Clearly, that's robbery. If I grabbed one of my friends over here and said, "You know, we vote together to take your property," that would still be robbery. Does it take five, 10, 25, 100? It wouldn't matter how many people voted to take someone else's property, job, or livelihood, ability to protect themselves. It wouldn't matter how many people voted for that, it would still be wrong. So, Madam Chair, I see you become visibly uncomfortable whenever the topic of vaccines comes up, and I understand that. You know, and one of the times that Supervisor Matt Hines interrupted my friend Stephanie Kirk was when she was simply making the statement about the National Childhood Vaccine Information or Injury Compensation Act. She was just explaining that, and he shouted at her that she was stating misinformation. Well, I have you know that that has actually been in place in our national government since 1986. It is not the Hysterical Mother or Lying Parent Act. It actually acknowledges that vaccine injury is real. And that is what a lot of us are simply wanting people here to acknowledge, is that it doesn't have to happen to us for it to matter to us. And you should be protecting the rights of all, not just the ones you agree with.
Thank you.
Board, my name is Shirley Recard. You probably remember me. I'm a retired registered nurse and an ordained chaplain. I'd like to first thank Mr. Doty for not letting this issue drop. What progress has been made to produce the passenger manifest of Matt Hines's recent cruise in order to verify the biological age of the unsupervised young male who paraded into Matt's stateroom while wearing women's panties? Am I the only person in Tucson who is not satisfied to take his word as to the young man's biological age? As I told you before, I'm a pediatric nurse. I currently have a 15-year-old grandson living with me. I know what a pubescent body looks like. That was not a pubescent, that was not anything but pubescent. That young man was not the age of majority and above, as alleged by Matt Hines. And shame on you, Mr. Brown, for taking his word for it and not insisting on an official investigation by this board, because Pima County is now the laughing stock of talk shows across our nation. Now, the other thing I'd like to bring out is the issue of different rules for different people. is the issue of different rules for different people. Case in point, when I brought an item with me that I particularly wanted to show to Matt Hines, and conveniently, he was not here, as he isn't today, I was allowed to turn my back to the board and speak to him on that camera. However, when Stephanie Kirk attempted in person to ask him to look at her, as I've done to several of you, Adelita especially, when your eye was on the phone and on your computer and not looking at us, she was chastised. She was called of being out of line and for making a personal attack on him. And all she wanted to do was say, would you please look at me? You threatened to have her arrested for such an affront. It's yet another rule of rules for thee, but not for me. Recall too, when Matt Hines continued to interrupt Ms. Kirk's presentation. He was subsequently chastened by the board's attorney for doing so. And then at the very next meeting, when I was there on call to the public and I was talking, as alluded to by Mr. Kristi earlier, he made you look like a fool because you told him to not interrupt people, but you allowed him to childishly show his, well, I can show you I'm smarter than you are, in a childish act of pique where he holds up a poster, takes every one of your attention off of what I was saying. And you didn't do anything about it. Shame on you. What are we coming to? We have no audience respect?
Your time has expired. Thank you. Our last two speakers are Keith Van Heenigan and Robert Royce.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Kirk. I'm my heart is so big with everybody coming in here. As you all know, I am a mother to two vaccine kids from the childhood vaccine schedule. I lost trust, so I am now awake. I did not fall into the community norm, Adelita, to go and get this injection. I want to start off with me at the gym yesterday. I'm getting ready to go into the stall when a woman hangs her head underneath the stall, phoning at the mouth, and in a seizure, gasping, "Help me." So I run with my pants half down. I eventually get it up, but I drop my phone. We all know I can't keep track of my water because I leave it everywhere. And I call 911 and I get help. So we all know that there's something going on because people are dropping for whatever reason. We need to know, right? I could not agree more with the majority of the people that are in the audience. I had somebody on the board at one time tell me that I was the minority, but I am not. I am the majority. We just we just all can't make it here in park, okay? So Tom Shimabuko, crazy name, MD Deputy Director of the Immunization Safety Office of the CDC, admits that the COVID-19 vaccines are causing debilitating issues in some. The FDA votes to make the COVID-19 vaccines and boosters bivalent. What does that mean to the normal bystanders standing here? What does that mean? That means that they're going to put both viruses in one vaccine. Tom presented that the information during the presentation, he suggested that individuals who get the common influenza vaccination at the same time as the mRNA shot may be at a higher risk of stroke. Have we, do we have any black box warnings on all of them? We do. We certainly do. We've got pathogenic priming by James Ryan Wilder, who expresses that. We also have virus interference by Greg Wolf, who also speaks about not putting both of those together. Imagine how sick you would be if you didn't get these COVID vaccines. Notice that's plural. Pamela McInnes, DDDS, during the same CDC meeting, expressed some conflict around the vaccine messaging. We don't have randomized comparisons to demonstrate protection against severe disease, and I think it's a problematic message. Really, we went from it stops and prevents to, oh goodness, what if you didn't get it, you know? We should move away, she said, from that circulating strand to a more contemporary strand. But maybe, but you may still get reinfected. So Pamela says you may still get reinfected, whether we put them together or whether we don't. We never did a study that shows that it reduces the symptoms to reduce hospitalization.
Thank you. If you want to submit your written comments to the clerk, you can. Keith Van Heenigan. And then Robert Royce is our last speaker. Thank you.
Good morning, Board, all present. My name is Keith Van Heenigan. And I represent the truths amongst us, the people who've read way too much science fiction, social fantasy. And what we're doing now is we're living it. The last three years, really, you've seen the country split apart based on propaganda and lies. The medical studies are coming out. They are relevant, and you all need to read them and understand the part you played. You've destroyed hundreds of millions of lives. You are responsible for those votes. Dr. Matt Hines, I'm sorry I called you dookie houser. I did not know you were a gay man until after that, when your boyfriend or whatever came traipsing across the screen. Now, your non-apology, apology excuse-making was pathetic and childish. You need to resign immediately. And as far as your gaslighting homophobe comment, to me, that proves you indeed are a hetero-phobe. And you need to seek psychiatric help. As far as Adelita, TUSD is all the proof I need that your political career needs to end here and now. You also need to resign because you're a Maoist. Your father is a Maoist. You have destroyed the education system in this county for over 40 years through incompetence, anti-American beliefs, and pure-up racism. And don't tell me I don't know anything about it because I can tell you stories. So, we're dealing with reality. Went to the gym show a couple times. Had to deal with beggars, homeless people left and right. I know they get jobs there temporarily. But when I talk about people, I have dined with ambassadors and opera singers. I have dined with business elite and blue-collar workers. I worked instruction putting up irises. And I've seen the worst of humanity.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Robert Royce.
I'm Robert Royce. First, let me thank everybody for showing up today because I've been to too many meetings the last year where there were five or six of us sitting through the meeting. Thank you Supervisor Kristi for addressing the elephant in the room. The bad behavior of one supervisor. I mean, he lost me. I didn't see the incident with the panties, but he lost me when I saw his bare foot up on that screen, which I took as a middle finger not only to everybody in this room, but to everybody in our community. A sign of contempt, absolute contempt for all of us. Having said that, I think we all need to restrain ourselves. I've done, let's see, it took me 100 newspaper, television, and radio interviews to change the government in Fayetteville, Arkansas, along with about 120 city council meetings. And I never slandered anybody or overly heated up the conversation. And we did change the government. I've been to 340 city council meetings here in Tucson since I moved back in 2001. And once again, I try to be respectful. I don't really pull back on saying what's on my mind, but overly agitating people or insulting people or slandering people doesn't accomplish anything. Having said that, I understand everyone's frustration. I'm frustrated. You told me to stay home for two years, for a year and a half. Then I did. And my business is gone. I consumed the equity in the process of surviving in my house for 15 months. And in the process, I fell behind on my taxes for the first time ever on my paid-for house. And now I'm being gouged, trying to catch up 16% by you all, you folks. You're totally merciless. And finally, one more thing. People are frustrated, but let's remember that we have a county election. All five of these people supervisors are up for reelection next year. And I'm looking at one, two, three very vulnerable seats right now. So I hope everybody considers by the time April of 2024 comes around and the filing period ends that we have candidates for, well, at least these three vulnerable positions I'm looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that is the end of the call to the audience. Does any supervisor wish to ask staff to review a matter, wish to respond to a criticism, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda?
Chair Grijalva.
Supervisor Scott.
We had a couple of comments from folks who live in the proximity of Rito Park about amplified music festivals. Would like a report to the board on the number of festivals that meet that criteria and how they are approved.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. Thank you. All right. Our next item is executive session. And it's pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3 and 4, legal advice for direction regarding the Susan Ammons settlement. I'll go ahead and move.
Oh, you're going to move?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move.
A second.
Okay. Motion, a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? It will be in recess there until we come back. Thank you.
Started, and for the record, we have our full board present. The next item on the agenda is Board of Supervi-- oh, regarding Executive Session, we are just going to move forward as discussed in Exec. I don't believe we needed a vote for that. Board of Supervisors sitting at other boards, Flood Control District--
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we-- yes, okay.
We need a vote. We need a vote on that.
So, do you want to go ahead and make a motion, Supervisor Bronson?
Move as directed in Executive Session.
Second.
So, have a motion by Supervisor Bronson, and second by Supervisor Christie. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item passes unanimously. So, Board of Supervisors sitting at other boards, we have the Flood Control District. Item nine, Repairing Habitat Mitigation. This is in District one. Do we-- is there any objection of moving the two, item nine and ten, together? Okay. So, I'll move both nine and ten.
Second.
So, have a motion. I move the item, and Supervisor Scott seconds. Any objection? Okay. Item passes unanimously. Now, we're on item eleven, Contract to Provide Acquisition Agreement for Parcel-- Warranty deed located at 4300 East Havasaw Road. To have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Bronson, move the item, and Supervisor Scott seconds. Okay. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes. And we have Contract James Perkins &amp; Perkins to provide acquisition agreement and warranty deed to a property located at 14350 North Lago del Oro Parkway. But it's a pleasure of the Board.
I'll move the item.
Okay.
I'll second it. Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, so Supervisor Scott, move the item. Supervisor Christie seconds. Go ahead, Supervisor Christie.
I don't have any problem with the contract. I did notice in the background that on this property, there is a fully operational domestic well. And I'd just like to have some idea, what's going to happen to that well? Who has the ownership of it, and what its uses will be applied for?
Administrator Lesher.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, so when we acquire properties that have well improvements on it, they become under the ownership of the county. There are no plans for use of that well. County owns numerous wells all throughout the unincorporated area.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, have a motion and a second. Any objection? Item passes unanimously. Now, we're on to the Library District Board. Item thirteen, Grant Acceptance. The Institute of Museum and Library Services to provide for writers and residents' library programs, $4,800. I'll move the item?
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any objection? Item passes unanimously. Now, we're going on to sitting as the Board of Supervisors. We have approval of the Consent Calendar. Administrator Lesher, do you have a recommendation?
I would present an approval of the consent.
Okay. Any motion? I'll move the item.
Second.
A sec-- have a motion and a second. Any objection? Item passes unanimously.
They--
Thank you. I think there was an issue with the microphone.
Somebody having trouble hearing.
Yeah, it's on. All right. Thank you. So, item passes unanimously. Item fourteen, the Consent Calendar. Now, we're on Board of Supervisors, Unfinished Business, item number fifteen. This is a review and update of administrative procedure for dash one in Board of Supervisors' Policy C 2.5. I'd like to speak on this item, since this was the item that I brought forward.
We-- I'll move to deny. I mean, but you're going to speak.
I think that we can informally speak for a moment on the item. Counsel Brown, can you address that, please?
It depends on the substance of the comments.
Right. I was just going to make a statement about it, because I don't know that we're going to vote on the item.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, to clarify. Yes.
Do we need a motion to move it to discussion?
No Supervisor, if her comment is just to make a clarification.
Thank you. So, what I'd like to do is just clarify very quickly. The update to administrative procedure, currently, there are two objections, or people that don't go through the same departments, that don't go through the same process, to put items on the agenda. One is the Board of Supervisors, and the other is the County Administrator. And so, what the idea of this was, is to clarify, so there's items that are attached, so anybody in the community can access the item and say, this is what we're going to be discussing. So, the problem that has occurred is that, I guess it's the interpretation, or maybe we need to wordsmith to very clearly understand what the intention is. It is, for example, if you were on a board, and there's a Treasurer's Report on the agenda, and you go to look at the Treasurer's Report, and it's not attached. So, what are we going to be discussing? And I think that that's some of the issue. And so, I know that Supervisor Scott wanted to discuss this item, but what I'm hoping to do is to continue this item, so we can get some feedback from other offices, and kind of wordsmith it correctly. But Supervisor Scott.
I actually wanted to--
Again, I think this is out of order.
Thank you, Supervisor Bronson, I believe.
It is out of order.
Counsel-- hi. Counsel Brown already discussed it. Go ahead.
It's out of order, according to Robert's Rules.
Thank you. It's-- no, go ahead.
Wanted to refer my colleagues to an email that I asked the clerk to send all of you this weekend, that I sent to Ms. Conover and Mr. Brown, asking for a written opinion, as our attorneys, to affirm whether or not there's a legal necessity for this item. But, as I said to Mr. Brown prior to the meeting, I think there are some questions that I can pose to him today that might make a written opinion unnecessary. So, if I could pose those questions, I'd appreciate it.
Again, I object. This is out of order. We need a motion and a second to discuss.
Yes. Chair, if we're clarifying, that's one thing. If we're going into discussion, we should make a motion.
At this point, are you prepared to vote on the item?
Yes.
Okay.
If we're going to go to that point, then I would make a motion to move the item, but for discussion purposes.
Okay. I was actually going to request that we move it to another date, so if there's-- we want to have action on the item, then we can do that. And so, if you move the item, I'll go ahead and second.
I will do that. Madam Chair?
Thank you.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
Supervisor Scott was going to finish the sentence.
No, 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 no.
Did you want to do a substitute?
Substitute.
I'm offering a substitute motion to his motion, that you initiated.
Go ahead. And you-- go ahead, Supervisor Christie.
I want to offer a substitute motion to reject the proposed policy changes.
Second.
Okay. I think that you could have just voted no on the initial item, but, okay. So, we have, because we have a substitute motion on the floor--
Like to call the question.
That's right.
The question's been called.
Actually, do we call-- if we call the question, we'll go ahead and have a vote on calling the question. So, all we're doing is--
No, no, no. The question's been called. Now, we go to a vote.
No, no. No, we vote to call the question, and then we vote on the-- then we vote on the item.
Call--
So, we're going to go ahead and vote to call the question.
What is the Robert Rules set?
Call the question means we go right to a vote.
No. Okay, Supervisor Bronson.
I'm sorry, what am I voting on?
To call the question. It's to call the question.
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Gerhalda?
No. Now, we can continue. We had a-- you had a motion and a second, and so we can have a discussion about that item.
So, the--
Go ahead.
Three questions I have for Mr. Brown. Because the agenda item is proposing to change procedures and policies that we've had in place for the first two years that we have sat as a board. And as I understand, it also proposes to change procedures and policies that were in place for previous boards. So, my first question to Mr. Brown is, does the Pima County Attorney's Office already review our agendas and addenda to make sure items comply with policy and law?
Chair Gerhalda, Supervisor Scott, there is a requirement for particular contracts and for particular items, but there is not currently a requirement for all items to undergo review.
Oh, my God.
If this item is not passed, will the Pima County Attorney's Office continue to review our agendas and addenda to ensure that items comply with policy and law?
Chair Scott, I think-- sorry, Supervisor Scott, the second-- a portion of one of these revisions, the answer is yes, and that has to do with the timing and the scheduling. As long as an item is submitted with appropriate time for us to review, and particularly where there are complex legal questions, then the answer is yes. But if an item is submitted, you know, right before the deadline, or Friday afternoon before a meeting, sometimes there's not enough time to adequately review. And that's one of the issues that this revision seeks to address.
So, then, the-- thank you for those responses. It seems, then, that the third question might be the most pertinent. If there were ever an instance in which the Board sought to take any action that was not properly agendized, would you intervene as needed?
Chair Scott, yes.
Okay. If that's the case--
Supervisor Scott.
But--
Thank you. If that's the case, Chair Gerhalda, with all respect to everything that you're seeking to accomplish with this item, I don't know that it is necessary.
Right. And I think that one of the issues currently, the clerk's office goes through every item. Right now, the process that we've started undertaking is, I meet with the clerk, with County Administrator Lesher, and with legal counsel, usually represented by Sam Brown, to go over the agenda before it's posted. I do think that there have been some situations, I think, one in this agenda, and two in the previous agenda, that we didn't have enough documentation to really comply with transparency, and that people in the community could just click on the item and know what we're discussing. And so, in those cases, I do think that there needs to be a process by which we could go back to those departments and say, can you add additional information to this item? I am concerned that what will happen is if we don't have a process that currently exists for the County Administrator or the Board of Supervisors-- the other departments do this process. If we don't all fill out this agenda form and get the information in, then what might have to happen is when it comes here, and we're going to be discussing it, it's been agendized, but we don't have the proper documentation, then we may not be able to discuss the item in public. So, I do think that that is one of the concerns that I have. And I'd like to ask the comment period-- comment period has ended, thank you. So, right now, the item on the agenda is to reject the changes to fifteen. That was a motion and a second. And so, that's the question that we have currently. So, I'm happy to bring concerns to you as the Vice Chair when these situations come up, but I'll give you an example of one that just happened. We were meeting before the agenda was posted, and there was a hearing that was already posted. It was already posted in one of our periodicals. And so, we had to put the item on this agenda, but the documentation wasn't complete. So, it would be on our agenda, but we would not be able to have any kind of conversation about it, because the paperwork wasn't there. So, we were able, because we met before the agenda was posted, our County Administrator was able to get that signature, and now the item is properly agendized. But had that been the case, what would have happened on our agenda is we would have had an item that said, this item is being postponed to the next agenda, so we could get the paperwork. And it would have been one of the items that was pulled. So, I just think that it's important, and I'm really sort of surprised by the reaction that it's a freedom of speech issue, or that it is a concern that way. Because really, all it is, is ensuring that every community member can look at an agenda and look at what this board is going to talk about. That's it. So, when you have an item that is submitted by one of the members of the Board of Supervisors, and it doesn't have any attachment other than the memo requesting the item, how do we all know what we're going to be discussing? And there have been situations where I have been on this board, looking at an item, and not sure what the discussion is going to be about. So, that's what the clarification is for. If anyone has any other input, we can discuss that, otherwise, we can go to the vote.
Could I pose another question, please?
Sure.
And not to Mr. Brown, but I wonder if I could pose a question to Supervisor Bronson. Because Chair Gerhalda, Supervisor Heinz, and myself are halfway through our first terms. Supervisor Christie is halfway through his second term, but Supervisor Bronson--
Don't even mention--
Several.
We know where you are.
She's been on the board longer than us. I just wanted to ask, especially given your opposition to the item, if you could give
us, as newer members, a sense of the history that dealing with the creation of agendas and addenda?
The history is, we've always done it this way. The history is, we've always done it this way. I don't see any need to change, and I think not allowing a board member to put an item on the agenda where you want backup material is a, is a freedom of speech. It's, it curtails our freedom of speech. It's a First Amendment issue to me. We've never had a problem with it in the past, and if this is, this is a solution in search of a problem.
Yeah. Thank you Supervisor.
I think that, in the position as chair before, when items have come up, that everyone has always done it that way, that doesn't mean it's the correct way. And I do think that, now that the item has been highlighted, and a discussion has happened, I would not be surprised if we get an AG opinion on what we may need to change in our policies. Every governing body does it a little bit differently. I just think that if we have an item on the agenda, I could put on an item on the agenda that has no, no indication what we're going to be discussing, and then we just kind of spitball. And I don't think that that really adds to transparency in our public meetings. But, we have a motion and a second, and so I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote. And this is denying, was the wording, denying number 15?
Rejecting.
Rejecting number 15. Okay, go ahead. Okay, so this is roll call vote on the substitute motion to reject the proposed policy changes. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Grealva? No. Item passes 3/2. All right, moving on. We're at, item number 16, County Administrator's Update.
Thank you very much.
County Administrator Leshar.
Thank you very much. No, I noticed that there is no backup material for this.
Right, and there should be, but now there doesn't have to be. Okay. And thank you. If you need to speak, if you let me know, I'll be happy to call on you Supervisor Bronson. Go ahead, County Administrator Leshar.
Thank you very much, Chair Grealva. The one thing, it's been commented earlier, but I wanted to highlight the Petson Parade. Simply Supervisor Bronson is the grand marshal that day. And so we thank her for her willingness to be there on a Sunday morning. It is the, it starts at Fourth Avenue and about Ninth Street.
But there better be a Mao there. I need to see a Mao walk in that parade.
And we so appreciate Supervisor Bronson's willingness to be there and to serve as our, as the grand marshal. So, thank you very much for that.
Was that all?
That, I'm sorry, that's all I've got. Yes ma'am, thank you.
I think Supervisor Bronson, I'll be there too. There's a new vehicle, and I guess I'll be riding shotgun on that one, so we'll have a good time there.
All right.
All right. So, now we're on to item number 17, update on county initiatives. I'm sorry. Now we're on item 17, update on county initiatives to address homelessness and public safety. County Administrator Leshar.
Thank you very much, Chairman Grealva. We do have a variety of issues just to report on related to all the issue. I know that the group today has highlighted many of the concerns we have related to homelessness, and a lot of the effort and the work going on the part of the county side of this, related to the criminal justice system as well, and the things we're doing to deal with, you know, probation and bail and release and some of those activities. A, a written report has been provided to the board, but to highlight that, I'd like to ask Deputy County Administrator Holmes to review the activities. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Grealva. Ms. Leshar, one of the things that has become super clear as we've been engaged in this work is that the criminality in that space has been kind of where we have probably the most influence in, because we work with our courts that represent Superior Court, and more specifically, pretrial services, which has been a function of how people enter and exit our incarceration facility that's under the auspice of the, of the sheriff. So a lot of our discussions previously have focused more specifically on how are we going to provide some wraparound services right there by the jail that could actually lead to people getting a more of a warm handoff to some of the needs that are associated with drug detox, what's associated with mental health, and then equally important, some of the other services that are needed. And that continues to be a great focus in our, in our collaboration with, with folks in the community, particular business community. The other space that has come up more recently, because it was, it's been in collaboration with the city specifically, is what are we doing in the housing space, right? And that's, the county has not, there's a continuum of care that's, that's part of how housing is handled through HUD in our county, and the city is the AGI Housing Authority. As we work together, our community and workforce development has been really focused primarily in the housing of those that are about to be homeless. So our, our work has not been in the street homeless, particularly as it comes to housing. It has been uniquely positioned for folks who have, are on the verge of becoming homeless, like families, and who need vouchers or those types of things. Where the city of Tucson, who is not our jurisdiction, has been, the group is putting up many of the shelters that you're seeing, the hotel purchases, and then moving people out of their cleanups into those particular areas. Purpose of this memo is to just really give the Board of Supervisors more clarity on what our role has been traditionally in that housing space, more specifically. And as we move forward, just really signaling that we really need a much more collaborative blueprint, blueprint with the city of Tucson, that really irons out some of the roles that they play uniquely that can address some of these issues. For example, you know, I talk about housing, and we talk about crime. Those are two big areas that are, are really important as we begin to deal with this, with this issue. The ones that are, that specifically I want to call out is particularly the drug use, the fentanyl use. I really think that has to be something that's much more of a broader effort in this, in this space. I know it's, it's done uniquely if people are going through the criminal justice system, but we're seeing a lot of, of drug use in our community, notwithstanding the homeless population. I want to conflate it with this, but it's an issue that we really have to take a better stand on in working with our county attorney, TPD, those that, unfortunately, we don't have direct oversight, but we do have the ability to bring people together to try to find a solution to this area. We do have cleanup crews that are part of our work, but most of the cleanups are happening within the city of Tucson. We do collaborate with city of Tucson when it gets in the unincorporated areas. We have a process for that, that where we bring in the sheriff when necessary. I know I'm working more recently with, with some of our folks for Crime Free, there was an issue with a, a private property where the owner was not there. And so there are people camping there, and I know our sheriff got involved and have been doing rounds. So I think there's some functionality in the unincorporated areas, but I want to make sure to clearly state kind of what role we play versus what role the city plays, and then more equally importantly, what's that collaboration effort look like. And so this memo is strictly just to outline what, what, what space we, we actually have been in when it comes to sheltering, and then leave it up to our Board of Supervisors and all you all to give more direction as we take a more comprehensive approach to this work.
County Administrator Leshar, did you have anything to add?
Do not at this point. Thank you Chair Bronson.
Can you highlight some of the ways that we're working with the city of Tucson and other municipalities? How the, how Pima County is collaborating on this effort?
So, Chair Grealva, I can speak more specifically to the criminal justice element of it. So, right now, our, our jail is managed by our sheriff, right? And that's been the management function of the jail. And so we work with our sheriff and bring him into conversations, specifically as crime has gone up, right? So as crime has gone up, the conversation then requires us to bring in to some police department to have discussions on what's, what are going to be arrestable offenses, what are not going to be arrestable offensive offenses, and what are actually going to be deflected or diverted through the court system. And so the specific actions that we're collaborating are with TPD, who has oversight from the city, working with initial appearances. Initial appearances, as you know, is a, is a big part of how people get, you know, coming out of a jail when they are giving their hearings date, and decisions are made at that point in time. Those are handled uniquely by city, through their magistrates, right? The IGA that was discussed last week to, that's going to be redone, there's a lot of conversations around how initial appearance are handled, more specific, what happens after that, initial appearance, how we track data. Those are the collaborative efforts that we're engaged with the city specifically because of, because of their oversight with TPD and their oversight with initial appearances. On our end, the collaborative, collaborative efforts are unique to our Superior Court, our presiding judge, and the oversight of the court administrator specifically when it comes to pretrial. So pretrial services are a function of Superior Court. That's where decisions are made. If a person is picked up by TPD and brought to the jail, if there's not a felony, they go to pretrial services. It's through pretrial services that they make determinations of whether that person will be released, and then set a trial later, or will be told they have to attend or go to jail for that particular point in time. So, and work, it's that collaborative effort between all those to really create a more functional system that actually ensures that people are not going to come back to jail, right? I think that's where some of the breakdowns are happening. People are coming in, but the changes in behaviors are not happening. And so part of the way we are proposing change in behaviors, that they're offered the types of services that's unique that are going to address some of the root causes of what's causing some of that. In the homeless community specifically, some of the, some of the concerns are some of those nuisance crimes that fall under misdemeanor. And as of now, the vast majority of folks in the jail are not misdemeanor offenses. And so the question then becomes, what are those offenses that are going to lead to people being in jail, but more importantly, resulting in them receiving the services they need? And so all these questions are part of the continued conversation to create more continuity and consistency about how we handle things. One of, I'll give you an example of approach of a collaborative effort that happened as a result of our conversations. There were concerns from some of the businesses about people who were being picked up at their locations, and then just going to pretrial, being let out, and coming back to the same area. And so one of the, one of the conditions of release now that's being implemented in collaboration with TPD and pretrial, is some restrictions, zone restrictions. So that person will not, at one, will not be able to go back to that same area without getting arrested again. And so it's imperfect, but these are just some of the ongoing conversations that we need to tackle, and a lot of it through the criminal justice system, and figuring out what are the best processes to make sure we can, again, decrease crime, but also decrease recidivism, which it seems to be the, the revolving door that we're seeing.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Okay. And this was just an information item. County Administrator Leshar? All right, thank you.
That is correct, thank you.
So, and thank you Deputy Director Holmes. So Deputy County Administrator Holmes. So we have item number 18 and 19 that have been polled, and now we're on procurement. So, we want to go ahead and tackle, I guess, item 20. So this is a multiple master agreement to provide enterprise resource planning system, and there are specifics, items attached to that. And is this the one that we needed to do two votes? No. Okay. So, do I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Thank you Supervisor Scott, and I'll second. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I have no objection to the overall award, except I would like to have inserted a certain element down on the, on the item on the agenda, about halfway down, it says, "The Board of Supervisors further authorized the procurement director to allocate the use of county contingency funds up to the amount of $500,000." I'd like to amend that amount from $500,000 to $100,000. So as to anything over that, it has to come back before the board for approval. So I find that $500,000 is excessive to give authority to the procurement director without board approval. I'd like to amend that to reduce it to $100,000. She, the procurement director can have that authority, but anything over that must have board approval.
So you're offering-
An amended amendment?
A friendly amendment? Do you want us to consider it? Okay. So I'm, I feel comfortable with the $500,000 as the second or, Supervisor Scott, did you want to move forward with amending to $100,000?
I thought I made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. So you made the motion. So, do you, would you like to change the amount from $500,000 to $100,000, or?
Not, not at this point, but I will second Supervisor Christie's motion, just so he can have the opportunity to-
No, he was offering a friendly amendment.
Thank you Supervisor Bronson. He was just asking you for a friendly amendment, and so right now, the item that you motioned and I seconded is $500,000. He's suggesting to reduce that to $100,000. And so if you accept that, then I accept it, then what we would consider is $100,000 versus $500,000.
I can't accept it without any kind of explanation from Ms. Leshar as to the potential ramifications of making, of accepting that friendly amendment.
Okay. Administrator Leshar.
Thank you, Chair Grealva. We've got a variety of staff here to talk to this issue regarding the $100,000, and the, again, we're, what we're, our hope is that we are able to provide any immediate updates we need for the current system to get it across the finish line while we go into the new ERP that you have before us. But with the contracts in front of us, we have a finance director, or our IT director, or somebody. Is $100,000 enough? Can we do?
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Scott, Supervisor Christie. The $500,000 was set specifically because of the large amount of purchases that are specifically under this agreement. The $100,000 or $500,000 doesn't make a difference in the way we would approach this. If the will of the board is to come back after $100,000, if we exceed the $100,000 contingency, that's not going to slow us down. And so, I mean, we're, we are comfortable as staff with it being $100,000 and going back. There is no magic necessarily of the $500,000 to $100,000. It was just, it was a reasonable amount that we set as a percentage of what the total contract is.
Supervisor Scott?
I'm, I'm fine with the amendment based on what we heard from Mr. Holmes.
Okay, I'll second. I mean, I'll agree. So we have a motion and a second, Supervisor Scott, and then I, to second, and we're going to move down the contingency. So as it's written in the agenda, it says to allocate the use of county contingency funds for up to the amount of $500,000. It's been reduced to $100,000. Okay? Have a, so any other discussion? Objection? Item passes unanimously. Now we're on contract and award, community workforce development, item 21. This is an amendment to provide work experience to program administrator extent contract to 1223, and amend contract language and scope of work. And so this would be for Tucson Youth Development, $406,000, $406,517, and then for SIR, $359,859. I'm sorry, I should start wearing glasses. Okay. So, I'll go ahead and move these items.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to point out again that this is one of those retroactive issues that I brought up a couple of meetings ago. It seems like workforce development has a problem with these awards and the timeliness of producing them. For instance, in the retroactive element on the background, it says, yes, this is retroactive. The amendment was set, sent to subrecipient on December 2nd of '22, and finalized on January 13th. Additionally, Tucson Youth Development is closed for winter break during the holidays for two weeks. The next available Board of Supervisors meeting to place the amendment on the consent calendar is February 7th. This is, seems to be running a thread through workforce development. Is there a problem there?
County Administrator Leshar.
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, I will just assure you that we've had discussions with directors of all the departments, and particularly working with our deputy county administrators to address the issue that you have raised and others have raised historically on the retroactive concerns, and make sure that we are, a lot is going on right now to make sure that that does not continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. A motion to second. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on 22, facilities management. This is American Indian Association, doing business as Tucson Indian Center. Amendment number four, purchase and sale of 116 North Stone, and this is amend contract language. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie. Supervisor Christie.
Looking at this, this revision of the promissory note, this really is a mess. The American Indian Association of Tucson agreed to buy this building from the county on, in July of 2016, and they've made payments so far for 78 months. The county financed the purchase of it with its own promissory note of $1.5 million with a promissory note, and that promissory note is due January 25th, excuse me, January of 2025. And this would extend the note by 13 years. So, the refi of a promissor, promissory note, was this, was the title conveyed to American Indian Association of Tucson? Do they own, do they have the title?
County Administrator Lesher.
Chair Grealva and Supervisor Christie, I don't believe they do because we have not finished with these payments, and I can ask Deputy County Administrator DeBonis to elaborate. But this was simply the removal of a refinancing to remove a balloon payment at the end of the term.
Well, I'm going to get to the refinancing of a promissory note. I'll ask about the conveyance of the title. I want to make sure if, not is it recorded against the property, but what this refinancing is, if you take the 78 months so far, and the purpose of, apparently, whenever you refinance a loan, that's not a good sign. That means that they're not able to pay the rent. That's number one. And it's understandable, because in 78 months so far, they have averaged $372 a month, and the refinancing, the new rates over the term of the new refinancing are as high as How can they afford $12,000 with a refinancing when they're refinancing at $372? And if you look on the assessors page, there's 19 notes on this property. So, I would ask, I would like to move that this item be continued and a complete evaluation of all the financial aspects, the history of it, the payments of it, the amounts that have been collected so far, and the ability for, even with this new right refinancing, which is actually raising the interest rate than what it was, how are they going to afford this? And how, and how did this come to be, to begin with? So, this is definitely something that I'd like to have go back to administration and a complete analysis of it and a complete explanation of this whole transaction, because it just doesn't make sense.
Supervisor Christie, was that a motion?
That's a motion, ma'am.
Okay. Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Bronson.
Excuse me, Chair.
There was already, there was already a motion on the floor. Yeah, so that's a substitute motion, because there was already a motion on the floor. Okay. Right. So, we have a mo, a substitute motion to, to continue this item.
Can I just ask for clarification?
I think that we're, I think that they were asking, yeah, absolutely. I think that Supervisor Christie was asking for the information from administration, so I'm not sure what date it would come back. I guess that would be dependent on when we would get the information.
I don't want to put any timeframe that would be inhibiting. Is there a timeframe that administration would be feel, feeling comfortable with to bring it back to the board?
Two weeks.
Chair Grealva.
Yeah.
Next meeting?
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, we can have a report to the board with those additional details within the next two weeks, so have it back to the, the board on the 21st.
And you'll, you'll address the, the title and what's conveyed, what's been conveyed and any notes recorded against the property and the history of these notes, the assessors' evaluation, all of that is what, what I'm looking for.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Scott. You had a clarifying question?
Supervisor Christie answered it.
Okay. So, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please. Okay. The roll call vote is to continue the item until February 21st. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Hines?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Grealva. Yes. Item passes unanimously. Now, we're on grants management and innovation. There's item 23, 24, and 25. County Administrator Lesher, did you want to address all of these at one time, and then we can see how the, the board wishes to move forward?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Chair Grealva. These are all three contracts relating to the receipt of funds from the Department of Homeland Security that are used by Pima County as we work with the, the legal transition of asylum seekers through the community. They are with the Inn of Southern, Southern Arizona, the City of Tucson, and Catholic Community Services. Again, they are part of our effort in this community to deal with legal asylum seekers. All of the funds that are, that are used in this arena are spent, are, come from the federal government in these contracts with the Department of Homeland Security. Nothing here is new. They're the contracts you've seen previously. We do have, we've, we're showing just the continued rise of the number of individuals brought into the community, but if there's any specific questions regarding any of these individual contracts, staff is happy to provide those answers.
Okay. Thank you. So, we can take all three of these at the same time or individually? What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm going to vote the same way on all three, but I do have a cup, just one, two points I'd like to make.
Okay.
On 25, oh, excuse me, 23 and 24, I think it's important that the public knows that there's no more monies involved in this, that, but it's merely an extension of an existing contract that we're amending. So, there are no more monies on this. However, on item 25, Catholic Community Services, we're going to be funding an additional $1.5 million to provide for emergency food and shelter to families and individuals encountered by the DHS. And if you look at the background, this will allow Catholic Community Services of Southern Arizona to continue providing services as a Pima County subrecipient of FEMA Emergency Food and Shelter Program and humanitarian relief. This, services are only for U.S. Southern border asylum seekers released by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, and it's to include services for food, shelter at the Casa, Casa Elita's welcoming center, and at overflow hotels, which include individuals who cannot be housed in congregate settings due to COVID-19 space restrictions. This was, funding was granted all the way back to December 30, excuse me, November of '22. This is another, just a tsunami of funding coming into the county that's being given to Catholic Community Services.
Yes. Yes.
I believe you were clear for time, but we need a motion if we're going into discussion.
Yep. So, if you were going to clarify it, I would be comfortable. So, yes, Supervisor Bronson.
I was going to suggest that we do items 23 and 24 together and then 25 separately.
I agree.
I'm comfortable with that. So, do you want to second that Supervisor Christie?
I'll second that, yes.
Okay. Did you want to continue with your comment?
Thank you.
Or do you want to wait for item 25?
Do we want to deal with the first two items as?
Sure. Right. But you were talking about 25, and since we already, we have a motion for 23 and 24, let's go ahead and move with that, and then if you have other questions on 25, you can make that comment then. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Supervisor Bronson moved, and Supervisor Christie seconded for items 23 and 24. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting against. Now, we're on item 25. I'll move the item. So, have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Christie, did you want to finish your question or comment?
I think I've covered the area pretty well. Additionally, and I apologize for not going through the proper procedure, but here again, it would be, I think, very illuminating to find out how much Catholic Community Services over the years has garnered for the, to sheltering and, and providing emergency food for individuals encountered by the DHS. So, it's all in the background, and I have ended my observations and am prepared to vote no.
Any other comment?
Chair Grealva.
Supervisor Scott?
I'm extraordinarily grateful for the partnership with Catholic Community Services that began, by the way, under the last presidential administration, when this issue of a border county dealing with the ramifications of federal border policy became necessary. And we often hear in this, in the documents that we get from county administration, the term "street release." And I would like everybody in the community to be aware of the fact that if we were not making use of these funds that are given to us by the federal government as a border county, the incidence of street releases of legal asylum seekers is something we would be dealing with at, at an enormous proportion in this county. And because of the proactive efforts of the previous board and this board, county administration and our partnership with Catholic Community Services, not only is the public health and safety of legal asylum seekers protected, but the public health and safety of the entire community is protected. And I think it's important to make those points.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. Any other comments? Okay. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Okay. This is for approval. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Hines?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Grealva? Yes. Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number 26, we have procurement, and we have several awards. Do we have any preference on how we move forward with these, or do we want to take them one at a time?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'm going to have a couple of comments on a couple of them.
Okay. So, we'll just go one at a time. So, item number 26 is an amendment award master agreement for Trajan Flight Support to provide aviation-grade fuel, and this is for the sheriff's department and their administering department and funding sources from the sheriff's funds. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Thank you. So, Supervisor Scott moved, and Supervisor Christie seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item 27, Dahlberg Design LLC Amendment Number One, to provide human-centered design consulting services, healthcare to ensure distribution of medical services among vulnerable populations, and amend contractual language. This is, the administrative department is Health, and this is, the funding source is U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and Office of Minority Health. Do we have any specifics? This is for vaccinations. County Administrator Lesher, do we have population information?
Thank you. Chair Grealva, I'd like Dr. Garcia to provide some of the specifics on this contract. Thank you.
Chair Grealva, Administrator Lesher, so this is a contract that essentially extends the term of our existing contractor for an additional year. The purpose of this contract is to continue to work with Morana Community Health Center, one of our excellent federally qualified community health centers, to deliver and design programs that help especially low-income Hispanic and other women to receive vaccination and vaccination-related services at their site. So.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I would assume that Dr. Garcia could answer this as well. In the background, first of all, it says the, this increase, which is the $75,000, is required for the contractor to continue providing services. In other words, he needs more money, right?
This is an extension of an existing contract and additional resources to fund that.
So, he can continue to operate?
Yes.
Okay. The additional services are need, this is what I'm going to need an explanation on. The additional services are needed due to programmatic and personnel-related delays on this project. What does that mean?
So, one of the things that has been a big focus of the Health Department, especially as it relates to this contract, is developing better ways of communicating with the particular population that we're talking about, women of childbearing age, low-income women up in the rural northwest side of town. We have had some challenges with our partner, Morana Community Health Center, in terms of being able to get, keep the project on track, and we had some contract issues initially.
Would that be MHC Healthcare?
Correct.
And who and what is MHC Healthcare?
Morana Community Health Center is one of five federally qualified health centers that operate in Pima County.
So, they've, they've encountered problems administering this program?
No. So, so what, the scope of work that was proposed required a high level of engagement, both on the part of Morana Community Health Center, as well as their users, their patients, in the co-design of the products that are being delivered at that community. That has taken longer than had been anticipated, and so, this is a way of continuing that work to complete that scope of work and to be able to deliver the programming that was promised.
Well, they've got till May 11th, because that's when the pandemic is over, right? And the most troubling aspect about this is this is for Dahlberg Design, and under metrics, it says, "Metrix including methodological framework, process, tools to measure project success will be developed by Dahlberg Design." So, Dahlberg Design, who the recipient of this grant is, will create their own metrics to say what a good job they're doing?
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, so the metrics were agreed upon with the funder, which is, in this case, the Centers for Disease Control. They're the ones that set up the overarching metrics, right? And yes, Dahlberg, as well as Morana Community Health Center, as well as the Health Department, were involved in the tailoring of those metrics to meet the specific needs of Morana.
When I went to Sam Hughes Elementary School, I would have liked to have sat down with my teacher and determined my own grading metrics prior to this. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr.
Any other questions? All right. So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Excuse me, I have to have, I have to have order, please. Thank you. I have to have order. So, now, we're on item 20.
Just for clarification, Madam Chair.
Yes. Supervisor Bronson.
I voted no.
Oh, I didn't hear you vote no. So, the item passes three.
I thought my mic wasn't on.
Okay. Item passes 3-2 with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting no. Thank you. Okay. So, now, we're on item 28, Lloyd Construction. This is amendment number five to provide construction manager reservices for the Southwest County Service Center and extend the contract term to 123124. And this is a no-cost extension. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Actually, I'm sorry. I was going to ask County Administrator Lesher to address what this project was for, please, and then I'll call on you Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Chair Grealva. Item 28 for Lloyd Construction is the Northwest Service Center. It is the Philip facility on Miracle Mile. Many know it as the old Golden Pins Bowling Alley, and it is moving the construction towards the service center. This is a no-cost contract amendment, simply to move into December of '24 for the completion of this facility. And an update to the report, to the board on everything that's been occurring at that site was finalized yesterday and should have been distributed to the board. Hopefully, you'll have it one by the time we're finished. Thank you.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Christie. Question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, thank you for clarifying this is the bowling alley facility, so we all know that. In the retroactive, again, category, it said this amendment commences on February 4th, '23, due to the change in departments and services. Change in departments and services. What was the original rationale for purchasing the bowling alley?
Chair Grealva, Supervisor Christie, the, I think that the, the initial rationale will remain the same. It's going to take longer to get there, and let me explain that. We are, the first desire was to move the Health Department north facility that's currently on First Avenue that has been, we've been looking to move that for a period of time. There's also a belief that we can consolidate other county services there from some of the community workforce developments that's leasing out of Bonita and, as well as probation services.
That was the original purpose.
That is the original purpose. Because of the increase in costs and construction costs at this time, the first phase of this will simply be the completion of the Health Department. We will be looking at the other elements to come in down the road when the money is more available for that. But the greatest change is without having all of those services there together, we were able to eliminate the construction of a parking garage as well. So, the changes that you've seen with some of the scope and the, and the departments are the, the units that will be able to initially consolidate and operate in the Northwest Service Center.
Madam Chair, Ms. Lesher, is there a problem with the current leases that exist with the entities that were designed to move into this and their coming due?
Chair Grijalva, Supervisor Christie, they vary by department. The health department, you know, I don't, because they are all different departments in different locations, each have different contracts. Happy to provide you that information of what's occurring. I know on the First Street, the First Avenue property, for example, I believe we've been looking, we've been continuing that lease for 10 years, of which I'm aware, a few years at a time, in hopes that there will be a new facility. Different obligation, contractual obligations and leases for the other facilities.
So there is a propensity for leases that have been existent that were designed to be moved into this facility, can't be moved into this facility, so we have to deal with coming due leases with the older facilities?
Supervisor Grijalva, Supervisor Christie, that's correct.
I, again, I don't want to put any undue pressure on administration, but if I could have a list of all those leases and their due dates?
Chair Grijalva, Supervisor Christie, happy to provide.
And in a timeframe that is acceptable to administration?
Within, again, within two weeks easily.
You guys don't have anything to do!
That was right.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Questions? We had a motion and a second, and so I'll, how do we want to do a roll call? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, this is roll call and approval. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Grijalva?
Yes, item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item 29 Division Two Construction Company Amendment to Provide for the Ina Road Fueling Facility Refurbishment. This is a contract to amend the contractual language, and there's a no-cost extension. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? Any opposition? Item passes unanimously. Item 30 Barker Contracting, Inc., The Chase Building Team, Core Construction, Inc., Duraso Construction Corporation, CapCon Incorporated, Kettle Design and Construction LLC, Lloyd Construction Company, Inc., and S.T. Crane Builders. This is an amendment to provide a job order master agreement for remodeling construction services to amend the contractual language from various funds, and the contract amount would be $2 million. County Administrator Lesher, did you want to address this one?
Chair Grijalva, simply, this is what, we periodically go out to competitive bid to make sure we're getting, bidding the best prices on master agreements so that these contracts are available for use by the department, so that we don't have to go out for bid every time we need something. It's simply, we've procured it once, and then with your approval, those contracts are in place for use by the department.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move the item.
Okay. Supervisor Scott moves. I'll second. Any discussion? Any objection? Item passes unanimously. Item 31 Real Property, The Nature Conservancy, to Provide an Acquisition Agreement and Special Warranty Deed for 20.03 acres of conservation land for open space purposes. And that contract amount is $290,000. Supervisor, County Administrator Lesher, did you want to touch on this one?
Chair Grijalva, we do have, there's a map of the property, is provided on the screen for your convenience to understand what we're looking at. Nothing further to add. Staff is here to answer any additional questions that the board may have.
Great, thank you. This is part of the open space property that was board-approved for $2 million to set aside, is that correct?
Chair Grijalva, that is correct.
Okay, great. All right, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Christie.
I find this odd because we're, Pima County is buying property for open space from The Nature Conservancy. Doesn't The Nature Conservancy provide open space?
County Administrator Lesher?
Chair Grijalva and Supervisor Christie, I'm going to ask Mr. DeBonis to go through some.
And might I add, it's for $2 million, right?
$290,000.
No, I'm sorry, $290,000.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Deputy.
Chair Grijalva and Supervisor Christie, so The Nature Conservancy is a nonprofit corporation that has as its mission conservation. So the county has acquired lands and has the perpetual ability to go ahead and ensure that those lands remain for conservation purposes. There's a few other slides that, you know, are in this deck, and if we can click through them quickly, what you see there is the placement of this property relative to the conservation land system and the Snore Desert Conservation Plan, but you can see that to the south of this property, across the CAP Land Bridge, the land is owned by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. The county is acquiring these properties from The Nature Conservancy to ensure their perpetual conservation and ensuring linkages for wildlife passing through this corridor. And if you click ahead a few slides, there's a picture of sort of the vegetative landscape there, but then the next slide shows the extreme mix of different forms of wildlife that use that. So this ties with the purposes of the Snore Desert Conservation Plan, the multi-species habitat conservation plan, and Section 10 permit that Pima County holds from the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. In acquiring these lands, they go into our conservation mitigation bank to offset then effects of development in the region. So it's a much broader outcome, if you will, by the county owning these lands versus The Nature Conservancy.
So, Madam Chair, so Mr. DeBonis, it does provide that ability to utilize the property when the county acquires it, so it can be offset for developments elsewhere? Because it seems to me that the outline you just gave of what Pima County is going to be doing with the property as far as conserving it is really what Nature Conservancy does anyway, so I find that odd, but I can see now that it does have value from, from the development standpoint, that it can be offset because now the county owns that property. Do you know offhand is nature conservatory property, does it pay property tax?
Chair Grijalva and Supervisor Christie, I do not know offhand. As a nonprofit corporation, they may not because of...
Yeah, if you could, it'd be interesting if, well, because if we're taking property off the tax rolls, if Nature Conservancy is in fact paying property taxes, and put it on county rolls, there will be no property tax, so it'd be, I think, very interesting if we could have a definitive answer on that. I was going to vote no on this, Madam Chair, but since it can be used to offset credits towards development, and I'm certain that Nature Conservancy and the county, we're not going to build Circle K's on that property, are we not?
Chair Grijalva, Supervisor Christie, we will not. There's one other picture in the slide deck that's stunning, so if we can advance that. Here you see young bighorn rams photographed along that wildlife crossing at the CAP Bridge.
Thank you, and thank you for putting the slides together, and if we can have that attached to this item, I think that would be really nice. We appreciate that. And so, there was a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor.
May I offer that on grant acceptance, application acceptance, that we deal with 33, 34, 35, 36, and 38 in total, and pull 37?
Okay, hold on a moment. We just still had 32?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm just getting anxious.
I'll get to you though, I appreciate that, all right. So we're on item 32, the sheriff, it's Sawato National Park, Arizona, to provide intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement, dispatch services, and management of associated records, including dispatch logs and warrant records for the amount of $17,250. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now Supervisor Christie, what was your recommendation?
Out of 33 through, numbers 38, I would move all of the items and accept them, and I'd like to pull 37 for individual discussion.
Okay, so you're moving items 33 through 38, except 37, I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. So now we're on 37. This is Acceptance Justice Services of the MacArthur Foundation to Provide for Safety and Justice Challenge-Focused Racial Equity Cohort and amend grant language, and it is a $63,849 decrease. Supervisor Christie?
I'm going to keep my, remarkably, my comments short.
Okay.
I'm pulling it so I have the ability to vote no.
All right, so I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can I ask for a roll, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I just want to, Madam Chair.
Sorry, Supervisor Bronson.
I want to note that it is a decrease. I would think that would make Supervisor Christie happy, but, okay.
All right, well, thank you for that comment. I was thinking the same, but okay. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
And this is for approval. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Grijalva?
Yes, item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Now we are on hearings, and...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Bronson.
Yeah, if there is no one in the audience, these are hearings, if there's no one in the audience to address us on items 39 and 40, I'll move the items.
Okay, I'll second.
And close the hearings.
Thank you. Anyone sign up to speak in opposite, okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on item 41, and this is a comprehensive plan amendment for Ideal Partners LLC for the South Headley Road Plan. What's the pleasure of the board? And this is on District 5, so I'll go ahead and move approval and close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. And now we're on a hearing rezoning for family, Lopez Family East Colossal Cave Road rezoning. This is in District 4.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie? Are there any individuals that wish to speak for or against this rezoning proposal? Hearing, none. Madam Chair, I'd like to move the item as, to, and close public hearing and to vote to approve this as recommended by, by staff and subject to standard and special conditions.
Second. Thank you. Have a motion, Supervisor Christie, and a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item 43, this is a hearing time extension modification, and there are two votes as part of this, so we need to take A and B separately. And this is a hearing rezoning time extension. This is for Andrade-Wilmont 180 LLC. It's South Wilmont Road rezoning. This is in District 4.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie?
Is there anyone here wishing to speak either for or against this rezoning?
Did you want to come up to the mic? Okay, thank you. And you'll just need to fill out a little card when you're done?
Okay.
So we have some contact information. Thank you.
It's not so much for or against, it's more or less, a little more clarification on roads. I had just a question about this that they handed out. They said be here, and they handed out this, they sent us a letter, so it was just a question really for them, because they're here.
Probably if we could direct you to the most appropriate entity that could answer that question?
Sure.
Would be Mr. Poyet back, and there he is in charge of planning his own, or developmental services, and he can answer him better than any of us can.
Okay, would that be something I should talk to him afterwards? Because it's not really a...
Really, I just, we just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you wanted to speak at this hearing about this issue, you're welcome to speak to him or...
Okay. So then it just delays it for five years?
Oh, you would just...
You could see him personally.
Yeah.
Oh, after? I'm going to go back there now?
Go back there right now.
Yeah, you can go back there now. I just wanted to make sure we gave you the opportunity to speak publicly since it's a hearing. Okay, all right. Okay.
Yeah, right now it's good.
I think that's fine. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for making sure that all sides were heard. Hearing after that, that there are no other folks present, I'd like to close public hearing and vote approval of a five-year time extension, subject to the modified standards and special conditions.
Second. So Supervisor Scott seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. And now we're on item B, hearing modification, non-substantial change of rezoning conditions.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie?
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak either for or against this rezoning plan? Hearing that there are none who wish to address it, I would like to move that the hearing and modification of rezoning conditions be approved, subject to the modification, which is a non-substantial change of rezoning conditions, number 4C, 4E, and 10, subject to modified standard and special conditions.
Second. Close the hearing, right?
I already said that.
You did. Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on item 44. This is a hearing for a Type III conditional use permit. This is South Sierra, Sierraita Mountain Road, and essentially, can we have, this is on District 3.
Madam Chair, I would like to have this item continued until our April 4th board meeting. Our office received a number of calls and opposition to the tower. I have a few questions for the applicant to address before the board meeting in April, and I would hope that the applicant can provide answers in writing. Number one, what kind of community outreach have you done? Was a neighborhood meeting with area residents held? The county has been supportive of towers up to 50 feet to provide wireless service to residents. However, in this case, I have concerns about this particular tower located on residential property at the height of 110 feet. Why the 110 feet? As for the tower placement, has the applicant looked at non-residential buildings such as schools, fire stations, churches, or explored an option of co-locating to adjacent light poles, existing electric utility? If he has, if the applicant has, what are the specific locations and why were they not successful? And then, why did you not consider more charter towers to fill the gap in coverage? Charter towers are less obtrusive to neighbors and area residents, so again, I'm making a motion to continue until April 4th.
I'll second.
Thank you, thank you, Supervisor Scott. We do have several people that signed up to speak to this item, and so, do we want to, if people came down, I'm in favor of letting people speak, but we have James Griffin. Is Mr. Griffin available?
Yes, Griffin.
Oh, online.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, so we haven't closed the public hearing, so we just had a motion and a second. Mr. Griffin, go ahead.
All right, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this. Some of the questions that were just raised, the neighborhood, really, other than the letter sent out from you folks, has not been addressed by the applicant or the property owner. I am adamantly opposed, I've talked to many of my neighbors that are opposed to this. There's thousands of acres of vacant land just to the east of us, there's utility lines out there, there's so many places they could put this, but by them putting it, where they're putting it, they're destroying 10 years of my work and my wife's work and thousands of dollars to restore a piece of property for retirement. We're both in our mid-seventies, we can't just pick up and leave. I also bought another piece of property for an investment, so I've got a double whammy if this cell tower goes in, and it's only for the profit of one individual out there who obviously doesn't care about the value of their property. So I just think there are so many other places that this could go rather than in this neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? And if you can fill out a speaker card after you're done, please. Thank you.
There are a number of things on this agenda that I cannot understand in any way.
Okay.
You all have, you have money.
Ma'am, we're specifically talking about this piece of property because it's a public hearing for this piece of property.
Yes, this piece of property, I want to know if there is a study group that I could attend, or are there any study groups? You've got a big bit of space here where people can come and discuss these issues, from vaccines to, to property, to rezoning.
Specifically to this...
To rezoning and to this piece of property.
Okay. All right, thank you. And if you can fill out a speaker card, please. Anyone else wish to, yes, please come forward. Thank you, and we'll also give you a speaker card. Thank you so much.
My name is Christine Tucker, and I am here as the applicant. I am replacing a gentleman who was handling this site from our company, and he unexpectedly passed away. So, yeah, I am here, I met with staff yesterday. We can't get into my coworker's computer yet, we've been trying, and so everything that was submitted is kind of in there, and the pass codes and all that, so the IT department is working on that. So the IT department is working on that. So I do apologize if there hasn't been continued communication. And you probably didn't know who to contact. The contact is not me. Like I said, I met with staff yesterday. They recommended continuing this so that we can go ahead and address some of these questions that you had. So I just, I'm here to introduce myself, basically. We will have, we did have a community meeting. I guess he did, at the site. It was suggested that the timing and the location could have been a little bit more appropriate. So we've taken that into consideration. We'll be having another community meeting to try to work with the neighbors and the neighborhood to accomplish a mutual consensus on how we move this site forward.
Okay, thank you. And when you fill out the speaker card, perhaps you can provide your contact information to different, our offices if we want to reach out. Sorry for your loss.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. It was unexpected. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no one else that wishes to...
I'd actually like to.
To this item?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward. And if you can also fill out a speaker card. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll fill out a card on my way out.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I'll keep this brief. I actually haven't had a chance to review this item, so I don't know exactly what kind of tower that you're talking about here. I'm assuming it might be a small cell tower. But if that is indeed the case, since it sounds like it's going up on someone's property close to where they live, I just want to review a paragraph of what I wrote to speak at a city council meeting not too long ago on this topic. So there's been a rapid proliferation of 5G wireless telecommunications facilities, more than 400 to date, most of which have been installed since early 2020. They're spread liberally throughout residential areas and often clustered around sensitive areas like school zones. But to the point of this property, I just want to note that they have been peer reviewed in government studies that clearly demonstrate that chronic exposure to non-thermal microwave radiation affects public safety in these following ways. It attacks nervous and endocrine systems, including our brain. They produce oxidative stress and free radical damage. They attack the DNA of our cells, producing elevated levels of cell mutation and death. They attack the cells of our bodies themselves, leading to cancer. They lower male and female fertility and increase levels of spontaneous abortion. So this is a real health concern. I know that's been played off a lot by the telecom communities as a fringe concern. But the health concerns are real, and there's something like 1,500 peer reviewed articles out there on this. So if you're looking to place this and if someone has a problem with it being close to their property, I just want to say on their behalf, I think they've got legitimate concerns. So thank you, and I'll fill out a card on my way out. Is that all right?
Yes, thank you so much. And Supervisor Bronson, you were requesting that this item come back, what date?
April, our first meeting in April.
April 4th.
Which I think is April 4th.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. And then, was there a second? Yes, okay, thank you. Did you have any other comments Supervisor Bronson?
No other comments, except I hope I closed the hearing.
I believe you did, but if you didn't, we just, we just closed it. All right. So a motion and a second to postpone this item and bring it back April 4th. Any opposition? Okay, so that item passes unanimously. Now we're on 45. This is a hearing type 2 conditional use permit, Aravaca Dance Hall LLC on West 5th Street. And this is in, yes, District 3. You're very busy Supervisor Bronson.
Yes. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item in opposition? If not, I'm going to move to close public hearing and approve as recommended by the hearing administrator.
I'll second. So a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 46, hearing rezoning ordinance, ordinance number 2023-P22RZ00004, Wong Living Trust, West Valencia Road rezoning. And this is in District 5. So anyone here to speak in opposition of this item? Okay, I'll go ahead and recommend approval and close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on item 47, rezoning resolution, resolution number 2023-3CO90530, Stewart Title &amp; Trust. This is a Kenny Road rezoning in District 3. Supervisor Bronson.
Madam Chair, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition? If not, I move to close the hearing and approve resolution 2023-3.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on item 48, hearing natural resources parks and recreation fees for services. And this is ordinance number 2023-2, Board of Supervisors Amending and Establishing Fees for Use of Various County Parks and Recreational Facilities for Services Provided Therein, amending ordinance 2018-38, County Administrator Lesher. Did you want to speak to this or ask staff?
Chair Gruh, staff is here available to speak. I think NRPR Director Vic Pereira is here and would be the appropriate individual.
I do know that we, District 5 had an opportunity on two different opportunities to speak to staff about this issue. Does anyone have any questions, request a presentation?
Well, these are, there is a hearing, Madam Chair. Is there anyone? I thought that we're, I know we've received a number of emails and letters in opposition. Is there anyone online? Because I don't think in the audience. I don't see anybody.
Yeah, I don't, there isn't anyone online. So I'll go, if we don't have any opposition, I'll go ahead and recommend we close the public hearing and move approval. And, yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd be willing to second that if we could make an amendment to Table 7 in the, which deals with community center programs. We heard from County Administrator Lesher and Mr. Pereira that they would be willing to remove the Tier 2 pricing and ensure that everybody who qualifies for the free and reduced lunch program is eligible for Tier 3 pricing. So I would ask that any reference to Tier 2 be removed. And specifically, that's $30 per month per child, $25 per month for each additional child in the same family for after-school programs. And then also removing $60 per month per child, $50 per month each additional child. That's for the summer youth programs. If we could have those removed and ensure that anyone who is eligible for reduced and free lunches gets the $15 per month per child, $12 per month each additional child for after-school programs, and then the $30 per month per child, $25 per month each additional child, regardless of whether it's free or reduced.
Okay, I'm comfortable with making those changes. And so then you'll second that. Okay, yes. Supervisor Bronson?
Madam Chair, yep, I want to make an alternative motion, substitute motion, and that is to deny this. I don't see why we are, if we can put a half cent sales, half cent tax on the library district for early childhood education. I don't, I think we should not have fees at all with our natural resources park and recreation fees for services. I think this is a solution in search of a problem. I know that the, as we, as we talked with several individuals in natural resources parks and rec, this is supposed to, these fees are supposed to make the, well, to improve the usage of fields. I think the problem, the real problem is how we ask our, how we actually require the various clubs to make, to reserve the fields. And it's, again, I think we can improve utilization of fields, but not through fees. I just oppose any fees in this instance. And I think it actually will deter some folks, or some clubs, from being able to participate and some kids. So I have, I cannot support any fee increase. And I think this needs to go back to Parks and Rec and to the Advisory Board to find a better solution to ensure a more uniform use of these fields. But the problem is with us, with Pima County, and how we schedule those fees, or those, how we schedule those fields.
And I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to reject this and send it back to staff?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote. I mean, I just, I wanted to note that we have had the opportunity to speak over the last year and a half about the necessity for the increases and that the breakdown of cost essentially was 20 cents per child, per practice for some of the fields. And I do think that, you know, unless our, unless this body's going to dedicate more funds to maintenance, we need to make sure that we are able to provide, you know, the amazing facilities that we have. I also know that when my boys were playing baseball, the problem was is you would see two empty fields that were reserved, and we were all bundled up on one with different age groups playing way into the night because we only, there was only one field available on paper. But in actuality, there were two other empty fields. So I think that it's important for us to be able to ensure access. And I agree that there might be a different way to go about scheduling the teams. But the current system, the way it is, really doesn't provide equitable access. And so I was comfortable with the fees because I do think that they're fairly minimal. But yes, Supervisor Bronson.
No, I agree with you. I think it's a scheduling issue, and I think it's on our end to fix it, not do this at the expense of those kids who want to participate in any kind of sport activity. Again, it's part of our mandate, and charging is, it's just unbelievably inequitable.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second to send the proposal back. Can I ask for a roll call vote, please? Hey, this is also on roll call to deny the ordinance. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Hines?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Gruh. No. Okay, so we go back to the original motion with the suggested changes from Supervisor Scott. And that one, one is motion and seconded. I'll go in, any discussion? Yes, go ahead Supervisor Scott.
Chair Gruh, thank you very much. None of us want to raise fees for county programs or the use of our amenities, but all of this was done, what was brought to us, based on some substantial public and board input. And I just wanted to point out some of the things that were changed based on either public or board input. The proposed field use fee was reduced by 50%. All revenue from fees that are collected by the department, not just the revenue from fee increases, is going to be placed in a special revenue fund to help provide improved amenities and enhanced programs. Families who qualify for the federal free and reduced lunch program will qualify for fees in community center programs that are substantially less than full price. The original proposal made what I thought were unnecessary distinctions between families who qualify for reduced-priced lunches and those who qualify for free lunches. The department and county administration recognized that fact as we saw in the memo that was sent to us on Friday. The, if you look at item 4C in that same memo from Friday, it says that the Natural Resources Parks and Recreation has biannual league representative meetings. A key to the NRPR vision and mission is the belief that participation in community and youth sports should not be limited by an individual's ability to pay. Therefore, NRPR will begin researching what other programs or best practices are tailored to assistance programs for youth sports within the Arizona Parks and Recreation System. Subsequently, the department will collaborate with league representatives to provide administrative resources to assist families who are unable to participate in youth sports programs. That was a substantial concern that we heard from league parents, and I'm glad that the department is going to meet with, meet with league representatives to provide assistance to families who might be affected in that way. We also heard that the last comprehensive fee increase was 14 years ago. Again, nobody wants to raise fees, but the department has been responsive and sensitive to both board and public concerns. They've also given us an idea of how those increases will be used to build better facilities and programs to serve our community. But I would like to request Ms. Lesher and Mr. Pereira that we get frequent updates on the uses of this special revenue fund and also on the master plan that you are putting together for improving amenities and programs within your department. I think the board would appreciate that. And to Supervisor Bronson's point, which I have also raised, the fact that we schedule the fields biannually. I appreciated what was mentioned in 4B of that memo, that there is going to be some discussion about how to address that. But I hope that we can continue those conversations with league representatives about scheduling our fields to avoid the problems that the department raised, but also to consider what may be revisions or reforms that come from the league representatives who make use of those fields. I hope we're continuing that dialogue.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bronson.
I think that just points to the fact that this is a work in progress and shouldn't be coming to us today.
Thank you. So any other discussion? Okay, Supervisor Hines.
Thank you, Chair. I agree. It doesn't seem like in 2023 that we should have any issue with like programming or technology that would allow us to schedule on a month-to-month basis.
Do you want to get a little closer to the...
For the clubs. Oh, sorry. Yeah, six, six-month block scheduling for these fields doesn't make any sense. And I actually would like to know from staff why that is the system. Is there something I don't understand about this that that needs to be the system? Why can't we do month-to-month, like, field schedules? I don't know.
Did you want to address that, Mr. Pereira?
Mr. Pereira, thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Hines, absolutely. We are actually in a comprehensive administrative look the way that we were conducting business. So we are currently in line with 90% of the state of Arizona. That's how they do it. They do it seasonally, in a fall, winter, and a summer, spring. And that's how they have been doing it. But absolutely, we're going to take a look at it. But what I'd like to mention is, just because we schedule on a six-month interval, does not prevent the clubs from canceling the fields if they are not utilizing them. So I have personally met one-on-one with our top two users for our clubs, and I've asked them to sharpen their pencils because I have a supply and demand problem. And, and that's why I have personally briefed both of them in person. So absolutely, sir, we're going to take a look at the way we conduct businesses to ensure that we're in best practices with the state of Arizona and Parks and Rec Department.
Madam Chair.
Okay, sorry Supervisor. Supervisor Hines was still, had a comment. I'll call on you right after he's done. Thank you.
Thanks. Just, and my second, thank you for that response. The, my second concern is for, I guess for entities that are, I guess I would consider community service or public health-based, that are renting space, that are having their rates increased quite a bit, like $50 to, I guess, $400 for a medium-sized room, like for Alcoholics Anonymous, for others like that. Is there a way that we could mitigate that for, on a case-by-case basis? Is there some process where they could apply for some kind of waiver or mitigation of that increase?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Hines, I was just informed that that does not fall under Parks and Recreation. That falls under Keno Sports Complex.
Yep.
Yeah, Chair Gruh and Supervisor Hines, that has come to us from a few of your offices, and we'll be digging into that a little further and getting back to you with some options.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Supervisor Bronson?
The other problem I have with this ordinance is it addresses, it essentially addresses the urban areas. This is really going to hurt the rural areas. You know, you are comparing the urban areas with places like Aho, Aravaca, Three Points. And again, I can't support this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please. Okay, this is to approve as amended. Supervisor Bronson?
No.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Hines?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gruh. Yes. Item passes 3-2 with Supervisors Bronson and Christie voting no. Thank you. I know it was difficult, it's a difficult proposal to bring forward, so I... I know it was difficult, it's a difficult proposal to bring forward, so I appreciate all your work on it. Now we're on the Board of Supervisors addendum, facilities management under contract and award. It's EMS Leasing Company LLC, amendment number one, to provide lease agreement for property located at 1150 West Russell Road and amend the contract language. This is FEMA EFSP humanitarian relief, contract amount is $79,340. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie?
For the sake of everybody's understanding, could the county administrator give a description of what this facility, again, is going to be utilized?
Thank you. County Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, this will be a large facility used, funded by, again, federal dollars used for our legal asylum seekers and housing thereof.
And the reason that this item is being brought back before the board because it's already been approved prior, this item here, is it because there was no security deposit?
No. Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, unfortunately, there was simply an error in the way the form was filled out and brought to you previously. The box at the top included the original amount, while the contract and the documentation also included the maintenance agreement and security deposit totaling $79,000. It was in error, not placed in the total contract amendment. So this is to clarify that error.
Madam Chair, Ms. Lesher, I'm sure it's, I know it's standard operating procedure, but security, but I do find it odd that an entity such as this leasing company would, would expect to have a security deposit from Pima County, but nonetheless, it is. Have we determined, and has it become discussed, who is going to pay for the tenant improvements?
Chair Gruh, Mr. DeBonus, you are more familiar with the specifics of that contract, please.
Chair Gruh and Supervisor Christie, so the county will use those federal dollars to pay for the modifications to the building.
And this is over and above the lease price or the leasing?
So, Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, that's correct.
And do we have a dollar amount, how much the tenant improvements that the county's going to be paying for?
We are currently working with Catholic Community Services on the design of the layout of that building, so we can come back to you with detail and specificity on what modifications will occur and the estimated cost of that.
And that will require board approval?
Chair Gruh and Supervisor Christie, I do not believe that that requires board approval based on the funds being out of the allocation of the federal grant dollars.
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, and Mr. Debonus, let me check what, we're certainly bringing it back to the board for your information. I need to see, I'll go back and look at the agenda items, see if TIs were included in the additional amendments that you approved. If they were not, we will bring the item back.
Fair enough, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please. Okay, this is for approval. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Gruh. Yes, item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Board commission under committees.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Bronson.
If there's nobody that would, in the day, wishes to divide the question, I'll move 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott for 2, 3, 4, and 5. Quickly, it's the Fair Horse Racing Commission Flood Control District Advisory Board, Flood Control District Board of Review, Hearing Review and Small Business Commission. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes unanimously, 5-0. This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.